Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting of April tenth, two thousand and seventeen. We welcome all of our guests in our audience this evening. It's always wonderful when we have folks who are spending their time and effort to get to know what the Board does as this Board tries to do when we get into our buildings and see the day-to-day activities and the celebrations and leadership examples in our buildings. So, welcome. If you are in our audience this evening, we have agendas just outside the door on the table. You're certainly welcome to follow along that way. If you are watching from home, you can pull up an agenda if you'd like. They can be found on our website, which is at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and pick up our agenda for the evening and follow along. As I mentioned a moment ago, this is our Committee of the Whole Meeting, and by that we mean this is the kind of meeting where we discuss at length the various topics that are coming before the Board. You're going to probably hear a lot of detail on items. You may get questions from the Board back to our administration, all in preparation for the Board to take votes on items. There will be no votes taken on any items coming before the Board this evening. At the conclusion of each of the discussion of each of our topics this evening, the Board will either put this on an agenda for an upcoming vote, typically following week, or perhaps set it for more study in a future committee of the whole meeting. You'll be hearing a lot of discussion, but not any votes taken tonight. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. The purpose of Audience Communications is for the Board to listen to members of our community. They may be members of the public, maybe our teaching staff, maybe our parents, our business leaders in our community. Please understand that this is not a question-and-answer session, so we are here to listen to your comments and your questions. If you have direct questions, they would be answered by one of two different bodies, if you will. The role of the Board of Education is threefold primarily, and that is to hire and evaluate our superintendent, to set policy for the district, and set our long-term strategic goals for the district. So if the comments and questions fall under those three areas, you can expect a response if you have a question. A response will come from the Board of Education. If your question that you're asking has to do with, more with, the day-to-day operations of the district, the answer to your question may come from our superintendent, Mrs. Andrea Oquist, or a member of the administrative body, as is appropriate, just so you understand kind of what this is all about at this portion of our meeting. We do have a three-minute time limit on our Audience Communications, and the purpose of that is so that every member of the community who wishes to participate is treated equally and fairly. We do have a timer set. Mr. Johnson has been our long-term timekeeper now, so if you hear a bell go off, you can know that it is time for you to wrap up your comments. We have just found that that's a little bit more polite way rather than having somebody interrupt a speaker. So if you hear that, you can wrap up your comments. That will be appreciated. We do have two folks who have expressed an interest in participating in Audience Communications this evening. Our first speaker will be Kelly Eddy, and whenever you come forward to -- come on down. Whenever you come forward, if you could state your name and your address for the record, that would be helpful. Good evening.
Good evening. Kelly Eddy, nine-six-one Northwood Street in Ann Arbor. I'm a teacher at Churchill High School.
Good evening.
I'm actually going to be speaking for a different teacher today who could not make it to this meeting, Barb Trzinski, who is a longtime school psychologist in the district. Dear Board members, I have worked in this district since nineteen ninety-five as a school psychologist. This gives me a unique view of the district since I go between buildings and interact with a lot of different personnel. Despite the varied backgrounds and personalities of those I've worked with over the years, there is an overall shift that is of great concern. In the old days, it would be typical to see staff fatigue in late May into June. Despite that fatigue, staff could maintain energy to complete the year with high quality. I am now seeing staff fatigue earlier and earlier in the year with a sense of frustration and burnout. This is not good for our staff or our students. Staff still deliver quality service in teaching, but at some point, doing more with less runs out. Federal and state record-keeping and reporting for general and special ed staff is ever-increasing. Additionally, many of our students come to school with increasingly more social, emotional, and academic deficits. As family members, as families face more stressors, they look to our schools and our school personnel for support. In the old days, we had professionals clamoring to work in our district. Now we have good staff leaving to work at Costco for better pay and less stress. I doubt they leave because they no longer care. My sense is that they leave out of duty to their families. They need the better income to provide financial support, but more importantly, they need less fatigue to provide emotional support for their families. We expect our children to perform better than average. I urge you to make changes necessary to provide our children with better-than-average resources for them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Priscilla David. Mrs. David?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Priscilla David. I'm a Livonia resident. I live at three-oh-four-oh-eight Hathaway. My zip is four-eight-one-five-oh. I'm here to speak for the bargaining team on behalf of Livonia staff and students. As we approach the end of another school year, working to complete curriculum expectations for this year's students, while planning changes for the upcoming school year, we find ourselves with unanswered questions and concerns. They cover a wide range. How will we use newly gained village funds to hire and retain quality teachers? What kind of academic support will we see to help raise our math and reading scores? And how is LPS preparing for today's teacher shortage, thus ensuring better sub-coverage from our contracted provider? Although we have brought these and other issues forward at appropriate opportunities, our questions remain unanswered. We find this common in other areas where communication could easily promote a feeling of teamwork and solidarity between administrators and LEA staff. Our goal is a common one: providing a secure environment in which each of our students can achieve academic success, and our staff can thrive and grow as professionals. As we work toward achievement of this goal, a disconnect has appeared over recent years, eroding staff morale. We believe this can be traced to a lack of timely response in our district. We find requests for information take weeks, if not months, to be filled with little explanation. Quite honestly, we often feel like we're being ignored. For example, we still await resolution to a question already addressed to you. What, if any, compensation is being considered for staff members in both closing and merging buildings who are expected to pack their own and district materials, then unpack them in new rooms or buildings? The shortage of PESG-provided substitutes for our classrooms became problematic last year, as we began to see a shortage of teacher candidates in our state colleges. Now this year, that shortage has increased, as seen in poorly-attended teacher-job fairs indicators that were probably, possibly graduating less than fifty percent of the certified teachers as in the past. Meanwhile, teachers lose planning time as they fill in for missing subs, and younger students learn, lose instructions as specials teachers are reassigned to general ed classrooms. And finally, according to our current LEA contract, bargaining should begin by March fifteenth. Despite formal notice from the LEA dating back to February, attempting to start this process, no response was heard until last Friday, April seventh. Letters dated March twenty-second requesting meeting dates were sent to our other three LPS units, yet no reply was given to the teacher's February request to open bargaining. Once again, the absence of timely communication. In Michigan workplaces considered the most desirable, employees feel their ideas and energy contribute to the success of the organization. They also state they are made to feel valued and appreciated by managers and leaders. Respectful and timely communication would be a great start toward this end. Thank you.
Mrs. Oquist, if you have something?
Mr. Wingeri?
Yes.
Do you want to speak?
Mr. Wingeri?
Thank you, President Burton. Yeah, I do feel it necessary to respond in some way tonight. These meetings are televised, and I think it's important for the public to have an accurate understanding of what is really going on, and I'm afraid tonight, if I don't say something, that the Board and the public may not, may have the wrong impression.
So this will be a factual correction, then? Is that correct?
I want to address the last issue in particular that Ms. David raised regarding bargaining. The district did, in fact, receive a letter in February from the Association. It was a full-page letter. The first sentence or paragraph addressed a desire to bargain. It did not ask for any dates, nor did it offer any dates. It's a very typical letter, just expressing interest, and it's primarily done so that we meet the obligations of notifying each other. In fact, that's why the district subsequently notified some of the MEA units that we wished to bargain because we had not received a similar letter from the MEA for their other bargaining units. So we initiated one, a comparable-type letter. What wasn't comparable is the MEA letter requests a substantial amount of information, and the district has spent a great deal of time trying to respond to that request for information. That, too, is not atypical. Parties request information, in particular, unions and associations tend to request information from employers so that they can bargain. That's provided by law. They're entitled to that kind of information in order to have a good understanding before they sit down and make proposals and requests. We've been working extensively in responding to those requests for financial information, budget information, information related to our bargaining unit demographics, and so forth. While we're doing that, we've had a number of exchanges with the LEA. They're well aware of that, both by telephone and by email, and face-to-face with the leadership to massage some of the information we're providing them. Certainly, there's not been any effort to delay response. It takes a great deal of effort to put together this kind of information, and we've been providing it on a regular basis. While we're doing that, we have been meeting regularly with the Association on other matters. We have an ongoing or standing committee this year working on what's known as Schedule A and B. Those schedules are related to pay. They're extra-duty schedules. They relate to things like coaching pay, department chair pay, and so forth. We've been meeting for months on that. That is directly related to bargaining. While those committees are not empowered to make agreements, they are empowered to make recommendations and observations to the bargaining committees so that when we are at the bargaining table, we have a running start. Again, I mentioned it's related to pay. Most definitely, that is part of a bargaining process. To that extent, bargaining has been ongoing for months. In terms of regular communication, we meet on a monthly basis with the LEA in what we call ABC meetings. Those meetings are related to any issues of contract compliance, and very frankly, we've been very liberal in allowing different subjects to be brought before the ABC committee or the group of individuals representing both sides to further communication. Sometimes, things aren't so cleanly under the labor agreement. So, we have been pretty liberal in allowing those things to be brought before that group for some resolution. So to suggest to you that there has not been bargaining or ongoing communication, frankly, it is just not accurate. It is very, very misleading and frankly untrue. We've had regular communication. And by the way, I'd add to that, that in my ongoing communication with the leadership of the LEA, and in particular, the Uniserve Director, we have not once in all this time been asked for bargaining dates. Now, that includes a number of face-to-face and telephone conversations. Never a question about bargaining dates. So again, to suggest that the district is dragging our feet is just not fair or accurate. And with regard to ongoing communication, that is part of the purpose of ABC. We have addressed a few of the issues that have come up. This issue of PESG substitutes is an issue that cuts across many, many districts. It is a statewide issue, not just in Livonia. And if you go district to district, if you talk to our intermediate school district, you'll find that we have struggled collectively as Board and administrations to deal with that issue. They're absolutely right. It is a problem. It is a problem without a quick and easy solution, and one that we have had ongoing communication. We have worked with the intermediate school district to talk about changing vendors from PESG. We made a collective decision to stay with PESG. There is not a simple solution. So, I guess what I just really want to say is that this notion that we're not communicating is just inaccurate. It's not true. And I'm happy to entertain any related questions on this.
If we're going to have any question and answer, I would like to suggest that we do that at a different time, because this is a time for the Board to listen to input.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Two, Committee of the Whole. Two A is Meeting Procedures. And Mrs. Oquist, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you at this time to introduce the loose-lipped discussion that's been ongoing with our Board of Education.
Thank you. So I would ask the Board to turn to, I believe it should be the third page in your packet, has the red, the strike-throughs, and then the red text as well. As you may recall, so I'll bring you back to our October study session. And I had brought to the Board at that time, President Burton and I had talked a couple of times during the summer and in the early fall about updating our Audience Communication sheet and making, bringing some clarity to that, as well as maybe providing some additional information on that sheet so it makes it a little easier for folks who want to participate in that portion of the meeting. So one of the things that Mrs. Wozniak did for us was garner the process and the forms used from many, many surrounding districts. I then reviewed the feedback from, I believe, twenty-two or twenty-three districts with regard to their process, their form, where it was included on the agenda, and how that process worked. What I found was, I think we have a pretty thorough process, and one of the things that I'm suggesting that we do is really just adding a little bit of detail and meat to the Audience Communication sheet, so it makes it a little bit easier for folks who have never come to a Board meeting or attended a Board meeting. I think we've all encountered community members who kind of look around. They're not sure about the process. They're not sure to whom the form should be turned in. Sometimes, they just want to provide feedback and aren't looking for a response. And so, I'd like to just highlight the changes that we're suggesting here, and then we'll have an opportunity to take a look through that, and I'd be happy to make any additional changes. This should reflect any feedback that you gave when we discussed this at our study session in the fall. So if you take a look at the opening, at the opening message, the idea of that was there was not previously an introductory message. And so, the intent is to bring clarity to the process and a welcoming message with regard to the Board of Education meeting. It also states where the agenda is available to folks, so that if they're here a little bit early and they have the form, President Burton, you usually refer to that, but in case that you haven't or someone was, is looking for that earlier, that's clear on here. It also immediately says if you'd like to be recognized to speak, you would complete this form and turn it into the Secretary of the Board meeting. And so, that, it just clarifies a little bit about the process and to whom the information should be given. So that's the first introductory paragraph. In the second section, in the second paragraph, we added the word "feedback." Previously, it had concerns and recommendations on school district matters, and sometimes we have folks who are simply just providing some feedback on how something went or their thoughts on something, and it isn't necessarily either a concern or a recommendation, but simply feedback. And then, at the end of that paragraph, it says, "and will be carefully considered by the Board," then we added "and District Administration" because that feedback is also something that we take into consideration in addition to the Board. In the Roman numeral number one, there is a, we just added again some clarity there with regard to if there is a specific question. There is ample space below to be able to state that question, if there is something to be answered following the meeting, to write down in specifically what that is, as opposed to a general statement or just a word. That way, whoever is responding is able to provide a specific answer to a specific question. Number two also indicates, we added the word "or designate" because it says the Board of Education will respond. And then, as you have mentioned, you know, President Burton, sometimes that may be a member of District Administration or myself, to specific questions that are listed below. And again, that's that portion. There's a portion just to state topic if someone is just providing feedback, and then an area below if they're looking to provide a specific answer or a specific question to be answered. And then, if there, just states if there's not a specific question to be answered, the Board and District Administration thanks the participant for their feedback. The third section just clarifies the three-minute time piece. It states that Audience Communication will take place at the start of the meeting, limited to fifteen minutes with the remainder of Audience Communication. It used to say that, this has always been part of it, but it used to say with the remainder of Audience Communication following Personnel Matters on the agenda. And so sometimes, that would fall maybe in an awkward place, or it may or may not make sense. One of the suggestions Board members made was to simply say, following the business of the Board. And so that's when the additional, should there be a number of requests for that communication, would take place there. And then, per Board bylaws, that the participant is requested to state their name and address prior to addressing the Board. That's part of the longstanding bylaws that have been part of the Board policy for a number of years. And then, number four, this was something, again, that we had talked about, that at times, there may be a number of folks who may want to talk on the same topic but would like to have a more cohesive message, and so maybe looking at wanting to kind of pool their, you know, their message together. And at that point in time, per our Board policy, the President reserves the right to allocate additional time for the spokesperson of that group as appropriate. So that's really what that clarifies. And then, in the bottom portion, we had some ads. Previously, we did not have a phone number on there, and every once in a while, if there's a question we may have, especially if it's a community member and not someone who we may have access to their information, we didn't have that prior. And also, a suggestion was made to have the email address added if that was, you know, a desired area for response, and then just a little bit of clarity on being more specific about street address, city, zip, et cetera, so that that information was complete. So really, these reflect many of the changes that we've talked about previously. I think the biggest change was within Section Three, which talked about following Personnel Matters, and then simply saying, following the business of the Board. That was one of the main recommendations, and then some changes to the bottom portion below. So we think that that will help provide a little bit of clarity to folks and also, you know, have the process better reflect our current practice. So I'd open it up to any questions.
Are there questions or suggestions? We've had some time to take a look at this form and really digest it to see if there are any suggestions you may have to make.
So just as a reminder, and I know you saw this in your packet, I'm sure, but the first page is just a clean copy of what that would look like. The second page has the changes and the strike-through, and then the third page is just a reminder of what the current form looks like.
Are there questions or suggestions for this form? Mrs. Bonfield?
I don't think on the old form, the box worked very well.
Right.
I think it was...
Mm-hmm. Confusing.
Yes. But in light of the fact that we're trying to answer people's specific questions and only answer them directly if they require or request a direct response, is there somewhere on the form where we should actually have something like where they mark that they're expecting a...
I kind of thought this...
I know it says, I know in the directions, it says if you have a specific, if you have a specific question. My concern is people are just going to write things in the bottom, and it's going to be a little bit ambiguous on whether or not we need to send a response. Or is that...
I was thinking along the same line and suggested that in the lines given after, "thank you for your feedback," just stating again, even though it would be repeating the statement from above, something along the lines of, "if there is a specific question that you wish to have answered in writing following the meeting, please list it here."
Yeah. Certainly, we can repeat that down there.
Yeah.
That would just be...
Sure.
It is a little bit redundant, but at least that gives clarity for where they're supposed to make that, or make that request.
Yeah. We can certainly make that change.
Any other suggestions? Mrs. Jarvis?
Along those same lines, where it says, "thank you for your feedback," the topic line starts above that. Then we have a "thank you" line, and then we have lines that continue right. Just switching the place of those.
Exactly. We need to do, we need to put "thank you" at the bottom if we're going to put the other one, if we're going to put the, if there's a specific question on the ballot in that form.
I think that was intended to, if there wasn't going to be anything below...
Right.
...to simply say...
Right.
You could stop here if you feel like you'd like to.
If you wish. Yep.
Yes. Yeah. But we can, we can work that through. I'll send it back in the packet if there's more changes.
Yep.
Really, there's no timeline, there's no specific timeline on this, but we'd be happy to, I'll draft something back up, get it out to folks, and then continue.
And it's good to have that many eyes taking a look at this, tweak wording if we're going to try to make this as user-friendly as possible.
Sure.
Are there other suggestions or comments on the form? I've got a couple. In the top paragraph, when we ask that folks present this to the Secretary of the Board of Education, many folks, I think, coming to speak won't know who that individual is.
Okay.
And were not easily identified. I suggest if they give the completed form to any member of the Board.
Okay.
Because we would all funnel it immediately to where it needs to go.
Sure. Exactly.
I think that might be a little bit cleaner and easier and a little bit more user-friendly for folks, if that's all right with everybody else.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. Somebody might feel more comfortable handing it to someone that they're familiar with.
Or if they walk in, there's only two of us here. Sure. I mean, if there are name tags, don't identify who the Secretary is or where they should be placing that form. Let's see here.
And that way, we wouldn't have to update that every year with adding someone's name.
Right. Yeah, we don't need to do that. That would be confusing. In paragraph, the number of paragraph two, "the Board of Education or designate will respond," and I would like to suggest we put in writing...
Okay.
...so that there's not confusion, that there will be responses during Audience Communications, which we try very hard not to...
Okay.
not to get into conversation at that time.
Okay.
So.
I will say every once in a while, it is, it is a phone call just because there may be either questions or complexity, so I may as say, "In writing or by phone," or something like that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just something that gives the message that it wouldn't, it's not going to be at the table tonight.
Right, okay, got it. Okay, we can certainly make those changes.
And then "will respond in writing or via phone," however we want to phrase that, "to specific questions that are listed below," I would like to suggest that we add "following the meeting," again, just so that it's clear.
Okay, sure.
That that will be a correspondence afterward.
Okay.
And at the end of the sentence in that paragraph, "If there's not a specific question to be answered, the Board and District Administration," and I would like to add, "will take your comments into consideration and thank you for your feedback."
Okay.
Again, it is repeated a little bit from what we said in the first paragraph, but I think that it's
Worth repeating.
Yes, worth repeating and important.
Okay.
In paragraph numbered three, the second complete sentence, not including the one in parentheses, "Audience Communications, it's not always right at the start of our meeting. It is for study session and committee as a whole, but during our
Regular board meeting.
Regular meeting.
It's part of communications.
Right, it's part of communications, but that might fall anywhere from five to forty minutes after the beginning of our meeting, depending on what's on our agenda.
We, it really is superfluous a bit, I mean, to say at the start of the meeting.
I don't even think we have to.
It's on the agenda.
That's right, yeah.
It's, it's, it's clear where it is on the agenda. We may.
Yeah, that's right. I was going to try to massage the wording of that, but you're right. Why don't we just strike that?
Okay.
The wording that refers to the time
Okay.
entirely. So it's, it would read, "Audience Communications is limited to fifteen minutes with the remainder of audience communication." We might need to say, we might need to change the remainder.
Make it, make it a continuance of audience communications if needed.
With any, or with any remaining audience communications if needed.
Following the business of the Board.
Yep.
I'll tweak that language a little bit to reflect that
Go right ahead.
and have that be grammatically correct.
And then the other suggestion I have was paragraph that's numbered four, if you are associated with a number of individuals, this is intended to be, if we have a number of folks in attendance at the meeting who would like to fill out loose lips and speak, to try to streamline, streamline thought and timeliness for everybody. But I'm afraid the way we have it written could be interpreted that there are folks who are at home or who they talked to during the workday or so, and so forth, that they want to speak for. So I think we need to make it clear.
Oh, okay. In attendance at the meeting?
Yes. If you're, what I suggest, what I, the wording that I came up with initially, and we could certainly tweak it, "If you are associated with a number of individuals in attendance at the meeting who intend to address the Board on the same topic."
Can I suggest changing the word "want to have come" so that it says, "A number of individuals who have come to address the Board?"
That's fine, too. So if you are, if you are associated with a number of individuals in attendance at the meeting who have come to address the Board on the same topic.
Got it.
And then the other, the only other thing I'd suggest is, instead of that solid line, that we make it a dash line that just kind of indicates a tear-off, because I would like folks to take this top section
Gotcha.
with them. If you fill it out real fast and turn it in, if you're, for the first time that you've been here, you really don't have anything to refer back to because you just, they just handed it back to us.
Got it.
So if we could just make it a dotted line and just write "tear-off" here, we can certainly deal with, all we really need is the bottom half, but I would like folks to keep this top half and
Gotcha.
hopefully have a little better understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. Yes, this is about to go.
Can we just check with Mrs. Wozniak to make sure? I'm a full, I'm a full-page person, sort of three-hole punch kind of gal.
That that's not going to mess up anything at her office?
Her filing system. I'm having a heart attack thinking about filing a half sheet of paper.
Well, that's, yeah, and if not, we could even do a two-sheet, you know, which is, you know, a stapled thing.
I just, if we could add, just make sure with Jill that we're not screwing up her filing system.
Take a full extra copy if they wanted.
They could, too. That's true.
I know.
We're looking up online. Yep.
And this is probably the least important question, would you like it to remain blue?
That's fine.
Just because we're so
Everyone's used to blue forms.
Blue sheets. I just won't be calling it a blue sheet and it'll be pink or something.
Yep, no, we'll know what we're talking about. Are there other suggestions or comments?
That was good, that was good, good job.
For those of us who've been around a while, we've encountered all the misunderstandings of this thing and we'll try to tweak it.
I'll make those changes. It'll be in your packet on Thursday.
Okay, sounds good.
I did want to, there was one other piece under Meeting Procedures. As you know, part of our, as a part of our high-impact school governance work, the Board had asked that we would begin sharing some celebrations of our students' efforts and our staff efforts. And many times we, we do that, but it's been focused in one particular, you know, area for a bit of time on our students and their artwork. And we've talked about expanding that to other options. So on Monday evening, we will have our first guests here to share in that regard. And then we'll continue to plan those for our Board meetings to celebrate the efforts of our students and staff along the way.
Okay. And who is scheduled for Monday meeting?
We have two students from Cooper speaking about the Makerspace at Cooper.
Oh, thank you.
So, yes, they've been featured in a publication and so they will be proudly sharing that piece as well as a little, little information about what they do there and how that got started.
Okay, great. And that's, for those who may not be aware, that started with the art students doing presentations, which has become almost a monthly event for us. But there, it's been so well-received by our whole art community and the parents and staff, but our school is more than just art. So there are so many other folks who express an interest to have their students and their accomplishments be highlighted. So we're certainly trying to make an effort to do that.
Definitely.
Mr. Sanders?
Would you like a vote on Item 2A at the regular meeting?
This does not need a vote, so we're fine to not vote on that. Yep, it's just, it's a form that we use, so, but it's not part of policy, so we don't need to vote on it. Along that line, though, that reminded me. Mrs. Oquist, do you know if in our policy it does give, I think that it does, but we'd have to double-check, does it already give the President the discretion to lengthen audience communications for a spokesperson?
It does.
I think that it does.
It's at the discretion of the Board President.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, okay.
In our bylaws of the Board, yes.
Okay, so we're all right with that? We don't need to make that change?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, anything else on meeting procedures? All righty, I will turn it over to Mr. Johnson for Item 3, building in sight.
Thank you, President Burton. We have seven items on our agenda tonight. We have Mr. Paul Wills from Plant Moran Cressa, who will be addressing, I think, three of the, the seven. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Francis to get us rolling. Our first item will be A, overall bond budget review.
Evening, everybody.
Evening.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good. How many did you say we had, seven?
Seven.
I know, we cut it down for you, Phil.
Well, they're in, they're in three parts each, though. We're going to start tonight, Paul's, Paul Wills, Plant Moran Cressa owner's rep is here tonight, and he's going to be sitting in on several items. We're going to start with A, the overall bond budget review. I actually think that, that Mrs. Oquist and I, we're going to talk about that a little bit as well with you, other than just running through the numbers. We just wanted to give you, can you still, still on this?
Sure.
Wanted to give you a brief update about where we're at with the bond with regard to the transitions and the closed buildings. We'd said there'd be some, some savings seen through not renovating those buildings. So did you want to turn it over to Mrs. Oquist to go through it? And we can talk you through the sheet that you have in front of you with the owner's contingency.
Okay, so as we take a look at this, I want to give you the big picture. As Mr. Francis said, as we took a look at, after our district enrollment and building use, team had completed their work and the Board had made the determination with regard to CAS in Garfield, one of the things that we had discussed throughout that process as well as following that process is that our team would go back, working with our owner's rep, working with our folks in operations and maintenance and our District Administration to determine where we might need to reallocate some of those dollars. As you know, we had needs that exceeded our initial bond budget. So certainly utilizing those funds was not going to be a challenge, but determining where to utilize them really was the work we have been involved with for the past two months. So our team has met extensively, in fact, we had two half-day sessions with a pretty large team from District Administration, Plant Moran Cressa, technology folks, and again, our operations and maintenance. And then we've had numerous regular meetings as part of our bond process. What we'd like to share with you this evening is where our current owner contingency is. Then you'll see the items marked in red, which is where we're proposing a change to the current bond budget. Items in black where you will see we have savings or recaptured dollars from the bond budget, and then where we would propose reallocating those funds. This was an important question that our community had and certainly that our Board had throughout that process. So we want to be really clear and thoughtful about our recommendations here. So as you take a look at that again, one of, we looked at a number of different pieces. We looked at our current projects, which we have underway, that will be taking place this summer, as well as our final summer of 2018. We took a look at past projects. As you know, we've done this work in phases. One of the things we did is we went back to take a look at Phase One projects to determine if changes that we made or tweaks that we made along the way to Phase Two and Phase Three, whether or not those were reflected in our schools that were part of Phase One and whether or not we needed to make any adjustments or any, make any additional upgrades or renovations at those schools. We also certainly took into consideration, as we're, as we're merging school communities, some additional needs or moving programs, we needed to take a look at whether or not we needed to make any additional changes to our current bond plans as they were. So I'd like to walk you through, again, the first section. You'll see that the professional fees for remaining projects is, that item line was increased by $700,000, primarily, as we shared with you earlier, we have brought French and Associates on board to take over the work in designing at Churchill High School. Additionally, French will be, is assisting us with any of the summer 2017 project changes that I'll go through in more detail in just a moment. And then some additional, just as we continue to monitor this budget, this has been modified as we've gone through the process for commissioning agents, for civil engineering costs, et cetera. So we believe that this is the appropriate cost as we work through the final, all phases of the bond. So that's an update on that dollar amount. The second item is regarding furniture. As you know, one of the challenges, I know the Board had when, when the dollars were cut, was that furniture was going to be a challenge to meet all of the needs that we had, students' desks and chairs, you know, materials for the class, updated, additional furniture for the classroom, cafeteria tables, computer lab tables, all of those types of things, in addition to looking at teacher desks and chairs and cabinets and so on. So as you know, as we went through this process, one of the things that our teams had continued to focus on were initially the student furniture with regard to their learning center, their seating, et cetera. We believe that as we take a look at the budget overall, that we do have an opportunity to supplement and look at some of those other areas, again, whether that's in the cafeteria, whether that's in some of our art and music spaces where we've not made any purchases related to furniture, the teacher stations, et cetera. And so we believe that the budget would allow for us to add an additional $1 million to that line item. As you know, that was a difficult one to cut to begin with. We've been pretty frugal and pretty judicious. We also know that there are many needs that still exist. There are some specialty areas, some specialty classrooms where they have some additional needs. And so we'll bring more detail to you, of course, as any of those purchases are recommended. But we felt pretty unanimously that that was an area where we needed to augment the budget. You'll see some savings of $250,000 with regard to testing and inspections, a transfer of funds in the security area. And then you will see that we're recapturing $1 million from the information and technology budget. Tim, did you know about that? Okay. You'll hear just shortly from Matt Linder and Tim Clan and Phil Francis with regard to a, an IT update. What you'll see is, over time, they have been, again, very, very careful and thoughtful about the purchases. We've had some excellent pricing that has come forward and we've been able to save significant dollars in that area. We feel very comfortable recapturing $1 million. And you'll see the bottom-line budget when they go through theirs. Probably could have tweaked that even a little bit more, but we feel at this point we can recapture that and put that as part of the general fund, which allows us to support any of our schools' needs across the board. So, and then as we take a look at construction costs, first I'd like, I'm going to actually swap to the bottom, the areas in black there, starting with CAS. You'll see that we are, there are savings either due to the schools, buildings and facilities we will not be renovating, either due to school closures or because those schools have been raised since that time. That includes CAS Elementary, Garfield Elementary, the current location for the Western Wayne Skills Center, McKinley in Perrinville. So as we take a look at those dollars being recaptured and reassigned, some of the areas I've already mentioned, and then there are some additional. As we take a look at Churchill High School, you may recall, I believe, two months ago, during our Committee of the Whole meeting, we talked about augmenting the budget there with $1 million from the sinking fund, not unlike we did for Stevenson and Franklin, although for those projects, it was about $2.5 million each for the additional site work that needed to be completed. We feel that the sinking fund needs are significant and they continue to present themselves. And with where we are in the budget, we would recommend not taking $1 million from the sinking fund and simply utilizing that from the recaptured dollars that you see here, okay? The second piece, the summer of 2017 projects are the $1,250,000. You'll see below in the code that covers some additional work this summer at Randolph, Garfield for the GSRP program, Buchanan grant for the fire protection, and we're going to be talking about that in just a moment. And then Cooper and Frost are two of those Phase One schools that I had mentioned where there were some things, it's not uncommon at all for districts with a large project such as this, over five years of phasing, to be rather conservative in that first year. What we found is we were able to add some touches and some, some minor scope here and there that just made some of those, those polishes and differences at both the upper elementary and the middle school level. What we'd like to do is go back to Cooper and Frost and do that same, do some of those same touches. And we've had an opportunity to meet with folks at each of those schools. They're very excited about that and we would recommend utilizing some dollars as part of that as well. So in total, that would be for all of those projects that I've listed. And again, these would be projects taking place this summer, so we'd have that in place for fall. As you know, the portion at Garfield, I just want to be clear that we're talking about for, for this, ready this fall, are the GSRP classrooms, not the entire school ready for the Western Wayne Skills Center. That will take place throughout this fall. Okay, so that's not, that's not part of that particular line item. With regard to Jackson, we, I think we've talked about a couple of times that, especially as we've combined programs there, we've added the ECP program, we're utilizing literally every, every single spot available in Jackson, and there are some significant needs there. That was a pretty limited bond budget line item to begin with. And we would recommend supplementing it as indicated here. We've done extensive walkthroughs there and taken a look at the needs of the school, the needs of the students there. Again, we service anywhere from eight to nine hundred children every week. And so we have a lot going on and, again, the budget there would, would have allowed for relatively limited renovations and upgrades, okay? With regard to Buchanan, as you might recall, Buchanan was the first school renovated using With regard to Buchanan, as you might recall, Buchanan was the first school renovated using sinking fund dollars. And we have probably about 85% of Buchanan renovated, based on that work that has been done. There was about a $380,000 budget initially allocated, which wouldn't cover a significant amount. It was, it was meant to cover some of those additional pieces. But as you know, we've taken a look at the scope that has been completed at, at all of our K4 schools. There are some additional pieces that we'd like to take a look at. With regard to Buchanan, we would recommend supplementing that budget by about $600,000. So it would be about a million-dollar budget total for Buchanan. That is much lower than our other schools of that size. But again, that is because many of those renovations have already been completed. And then finally, for the Western Wayne Skill Center at Garfield, what, when you see the, the budget item there of 1.5 million dollars, as you know, we are taking the dollars that were initially allocated for the Western Wayne Skill Center, which was about 1.1 million dollars. We're recommending augmenting that with an additional $400,000, based on our assessment of the school and of the needs. And then, we would also recommend utilizing approximately $500,000 from the ACT-18 Fund, which is certainly an allowable expense. It is an ACT-18 program. We have a healthy fund balance in the ACT-18 program, and part of that is utilized for program services, materials, et cetera, for our students. And so, that would be a total budget of $2 million. So those are the most significant changes that we're recommending. As you'll see below, we have some good news with regard to earned interest to date. You see a pretty significant dollar item there. We've earned about $900,000 in interest on Series One bonds.
Just to clarify that one, we, we looked it up just shortly ago. It, it's vast majority is Series One. We're starting to actually
Take in a little.
Take in a little from Series Two as well. So some of that 900 is actually Series Two. So then the projected earned interest is a conservative estimate based upon, on how well it, that the bonds are doing right now of the 600. But that is, hasn't yet to be actually, or actualized and captured, but the 900 has.
So we anticipate, on a conservative note, about 1.5 million dollars in earned interest. It may be more, but again, we'd like to just anticipate what that will be based on the returns that we're seeing at this point. So even with those reallocations and utilizing, augmenting those budgets as recommended here, we would still have a proposed owner contingency of about a little over $5 million. In all likelihood, it, it will be a little higher than that, again, based on the earned interest, based on closing out some of our, our Phase Three and then Phase Four projects. We'll, we'll realize additional, some additional dollars there potentially. But at this point in time, we would not want to make recommendations. At this point, we still have a significant amount of work to do. We would suggest you, holding on that last $5 million. There are plenty of needs that exist. What we'd like to do is complete the work as we've recommended. If there are other projects that come up, that, for which there are allowable bond expenses, then we would certainly bring that back to the board. But we have some time before those funds need to be expended. And so, we'd recommend the changes as listed here, but we are not suggesting additional at this time.
No, again, it was just, in working with PFM, the financial advisor, it's something that you track on a quarterly basis. And again, you do have up to three years to spend the 85% of the second series, and a full five years for the full completion. So that, we're not looking for any rush to that decision, but there is a time limit, so it just can't sit there forever.
And, and I just wanted to point out, at one point a little earlier, when we were talking about moving some of the IT money and the security money, it's not going towards the general fund as we know it, but the general bond, 2013 bond money. So just for clarification, anyone that heard those two famous words, general and fund, put together, it's, it's for the general construction items that we're doing on the bond.
Questions? Chris Burt.
The furniture, you, you may not know this off the top of your head, and if you don't, if you could just get back with us. I know that when we started off with the 195 million bond that was passed, that covered replacement of about 75% of our furniture. So with this additional money that we're putting toward it, I was just curious as to what percent, how close we're getting to replacing all of the furniture that needs to be replaced. And I recognize, there's some that we're not replacing because it doesn't need it.
Right.
That it was a relatively recent purchase. But of, of the stuff that we would like to replace, how close are we?
Sure. And what we could do is, we could actually provide even a little more detail beyond that, because a piece of it is what we're able to replace as far as that student furniture in the classroom. But then we can also share with you some prioritized items that would be coming next. So some of it may not be, as you said, we may not need 100%, therefore, we may be able to bump that up to 83% or 85% and be set. But then, what are the additional needs? And we have a pretty lengthy list, and so, we've, we've begun to prioritize that, getting some information, again, from our district leadership, and then looking also then to our building folks to, to give us some feedback on that. And what we may look to do, what we've even talked about doing is, as we get down and we've, we've provided the base to each school, there are some, again, unique programs or unique needs in a particular school. We may allocate a certain dollar amount to say, you know, within these parameters, what would be your priority items for that? And so, that, those are, but we'll go into a little bit more detail for you and share a memo with you about that.
And all of those items would obviously have to fall within the legal language of the bond as we had it passed.
Oh, absolutely.
As, as we, as this board is abundantly clear, but just so the public is clear, items such as textbooks, such as salary expenditures, items such as those, as much as, as they are valid needs in our district, are not able to be paid for out of bond dollars. So the discussion we're having right now is strictly items that are, that can be paid for out of the bond dollars, including the $5 million in contingency.
Yes.
That, that can only be spent on bond items, so. You had mentioned the Summer 2017 projects. I think I missed one or two of the schools or projects. I have got Grant, Cooper, Frost, GSRP at Garfield, and did I miss?
There's, at the bottom, you have the little plus sign at the bottom that, that has Randolph, the Garfield, but the GSRP portion only. And then Buchanan, the Grant, for the fire protection, which we'll be bringing up shortly. And then the Cooper Frost, which we're going back to Phase One buildings for a couple of touch-ups on things that they did not get during the first year, but we started to do in subsequent years.
Okay. Jackson, and I'm aware that a lot could be done at Jackson. I went there, and it's largely the same as when I was seven. I'm not seven anymore. What kind of work are we looking at, at a first glance at Jackson right now? I know it's, it's not the same as, as one of our K12s, but do any of the three?
Yeah, we, we did a, a walk, I think it was the President's Day, when, when everything was closed. A rather large group walked through Jackson. And just as an overview, it essentially is the, the basics of the classroom. You know, trying to see what, what the scope could, could cover with regard to floors, walls, lights, ceilings, those types of things. If there's HVAC issues, et cetera, potentially some reconfigurations in a few places. But, you know, it's not, yeah, it's gonna be as, I guess a spruce-up would be the best, best way to say it, making sure the classrooms have the right equipment, and, and those are all spruced up.
It really is, the, the budget as, without augmenting it, would not have allowed us to do the, the types of things that we've done in other places. And so, for the most part, what we've done is taken a look at, for instance, you know, the windows in the hallway. And so, if, you know, we could save some funding by not completely tearing those out, replacing, so on and so forth. And so, we've, we've been conservative on some of those pieces to say, okay, that can stay, but we really do need to replace all of the flooring. We do need to replace all of the lighting. We do need to update the HVAC systems and the phones and the, the PAs, and so on and so forth. And so, those are the types of things that this would allow us to do, is to be able to cover those in each of the classrooms, to really do that basic LPS model for, for each of the learning areas in the school. But really not go to the extent of, again, some of those much more expensive pieces, you know, as I just discussed.
Right. Because our average elementary building is a little over 3 million, so this is clearly not that.
Right, right.
Good to know there are other improvements being done at that point.
Yes, definitely, definitely. We think it'll be a significant, significant improvement, and be very, very appropriate for the needs of the children with whom we're working.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mrs. Frank.
Going off of the Jackson Center, I know that they're at capacity right now. There's waiting lists, that sort of thing. This will not address any additional capacity. Is our long-term plan to do anything to address additional capacity, is this, is this helpful to that? Or is this really kind of just trying to maintain what we already have without thinking long-term?
So we talked a little bit about some of the areas we could potentially reconfigure. There are some areas utilized in different ways that we may be able to garner maybe an additional classroom or two here or there. We're not looking to, if you mean, build an addition or something like that on the school. We're looking to, where we can, do some reconfiguring to maybe garner some additional space. We've done some things with regard to some outdoor storage. So where we might have previously used a classroom for some of these larger materials or equipment for the students, we're able to take a look at housing that in an outdoor storage location as opposed to utilizing a classroom. So recapturing some space that way.
I think it'd be safe to say that, that any space, that's a good phrase, any space that we could recapture through the bond renovation process is being thought through, but the footprint will be the footprint.
Anything else?
Just from my history, because Karen and I, she probably knows it, but just for, so Buchanan was renovated under, you said sinking funds originally. That was before the bond was passed?
Yes.
So it was just done under sinking fund dollars? It was not, okay. And then, so all of these updates, though, they leave the Summer 2018 budgets the same way they were. There's no increase to the 2018.
So when you look at Jackson and Buchanan, those are actually 2018 projects.
Okay.
And then, not to confuse you, Buchanan, I should have clarified that. So this summer, the dollars that you see under the Summer 2017 projects, as it relates to Buchanan, are for the site work with regard to the paving.
Yes.
The additional $600,000 is for the Summer of '18 bond construction and renovation. We are not renovating, doing any renovations within the school this summer there. This is for, the, the Summer 2017 line item, as it relates to Buchanan, is for site work.
Okay, okay.
So, yes, some of these are supplementing the 2018 budgets. We really want to know that now, because this is the time when our architects would be doing the designing. We want to get that ready and get that information to you, get, you know, our schematic designs going so that we're able to get our bids out in a timely manner and so forth.
And the only other one for 2018 is Webster, correct?
Yes. We felt that that budget is sufficient.
Also?
Yes, thank you.
So we feel that we were able to make really some really good use of, of some of those dollars and really be able to augment in ways that will be very, very, very beneficial to the students and to the staff at those schools. Improvements that we believe, you know, families will appreciate, which is, which is certainly important. We know that one of the things that was a difficult part of the process was determining, okay, if, if we're going to save those dollars, then where are they going to be reallocated? In some cases, they are where we're reassigning students, where we're going to have more students. In some cases, they're at some of the schools where some of the budgets really needed some of that augmenting, if at all possible. So, this is our recommendation to date. It would not require specific action, but we'd like to proceed with this plan and begin to work with our folks on that.
I think we have a consensus on that. Mr. Senator.
The, am I correct that Churchill and the Summer projects were, are the two portions that were originally going to be paid for out of sinking fund?
The Churchill was, yes.
Churchill, the Summer projects was the board, uh, the bond, so, okay. So total savings, approximately about a million dollars from sinking fund?
Yes, yes. Which we think really is, is needed, you know, as we continue to take a look at roofs, some boilers, some of the, the significant needs that we are going to have in the next year or two. If we had the money to do that and did not pull that out of sinking fund, we really would recommend that to the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we do have a consensus to him?
Yes.
My left side is the consensus.
I'm curious to know, Nijiiro, when we passed the bond, it really wasn't part of LPS at the time.
Yes.
So do, are we not allowed to do anything there because of that, or what, do we have a plan?
We do, and we have, had indicated that unless the board has a different direction on that, we have stuck with the process as we've laid out the schools that were initially part of our bond planning and part of our bond budgeting. Those dollars continue to be allocated to the schools that we had at the time in which, you know, folks passed the bond in 2013. We have made, we have put in some upgrades at Nijiiro. We've utilized some of our technology funds. We've utilized some sinking funds, both for site improvement and for some of the IT and technology work, the wireless, the computers, you know, the monitors and so on. As additional site work may be needed, we would recommend utilizing sinking fund dollars for that as, as those needs exist. And those schools are, we take a look at all of our facilities that, that was part of the long-term sinking fund review that was presented to the board in December of 2015. Niji was included in that. And so, we do know with regard to some of the more significant items, such as roofs and boilers and things, when we would need to make those changes. So again, we have made some of those improvements and added some of that technology out of different funds other than the bond fund. So it's not as though it's not allowed. That was not part of the initial bond budgeting. And so, we've continued to move forward with that premise, and then indicated that we would utilize sinking fund dollars as necessary.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Senator.
I would, if for some reason that contingency, the owner's proposed contingency does come out significantly higher, it may be worth taking a look. Because obviously, we do a lot of pride in that school. We have a lot of needs all around, but, you know, that's a, that's a great program as well. But it'd be interesting to see, you know, because I know costs can, can change. But when it's all said and done, where we're at, it may be interesting just to look at.
Certainly, we'd be happy to do that. And I think you're right, I think one of the things that we are moving forward somewhat conservatively with regard to that final owner's contingency is because we still have to go through a, a number of projects yet to be bid. And as you know, the market has become less and less, well, favorable for folks doing the work, a little less favorable for the folks purchasing those services, because there is much more work out there. And so, Paul, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, but we do want to be a little cautious as we move forward. And then we would absolutely be able to better determine, closer to this time next year, where our, where our budget is.
So this does not require any specific action?
It does not.
Not for, not for next week's event process?
Okay. All right, then we'll move to 3B Bond Technology Update.
So we wanted to do a technology update, the bond technology update. So to that end, I'm gonna invite Mr. Tim Clan, he's the administrator of Information Technology for the Wondy Public Schools, and Mr. Matt Linder from Plant Moran Cressa, owner's representative. They're gonna give a little bit of a presentation, if Mr. Clan can figure out how to use the technology. And, and go through the handouts to update you on where we're at with the bond. As Mrs. Oakwood had mentioned, through bulk purchasing and, and really doing some due diligence, the IT folks have brought some of those costs down from the plans. So I think we're gonna go through that, plus some of the ideas, where we've been, and, and ideas of where we want to go.
You'll switch with me and I can drive the slides?
Yeah, do it.
Okay.
Very good. Just pinch me whenever you need it.
Sounds good. All right. Give a second for the monitor to come to life. Very good. So, as we said, yeah, we do have a, a brief presentation, just gonna give you a sense of, you know, a reminder of what the original scope of the bond for, as far as technology was concerned, what that scope was, what sort of progress we've made to date, and then what's kind of in the pipe right now, and what's coming down the road from a technology perspective. So if you want to jump into it, the original scope, just again as a reminder, we had just over $30 million in the original technology. $30 million in the original technology budget, and that was allocated across a number of different categories, including classroom technology tools. So these would be things like projectors, audio enhancement systems, document cameras, those sorts of things. Mobile learning devices, iPads, Chromebooks, those sorts of devices we can put in, put in students' hands for teaching and learning. Classroom and administrative computers, so teacher computers, administrator computers, that sort of thing. Enhanced wireless network throughout the district, and then wired network upgrades as well. New phone systems district-wide, printers and copiers district-wide, servers and other data storage infrastructure, video surveillance systems, the structured cabling systems that need to go in place to support all of this hardware that we're putting out there. And then finally, community rooms, larger area class, or AV type solutions. So that was the original scope. We'll check that off. Activities to date, so what's been completed district-wide? The wireless network is in, in all buildings in the district and is complete. New computers for students, staff, administrators, labs are also installed district-wide. And then bus video surveillance is completed as well, but I will say the bus video surveillance is completed within the scope of the original contract. And if you recall the original contract that we had, it was for just a little over half of the bus fleet that the, that the district had. It was 58 total buses that we were able to equip with video surveillance solutions. Ms. Okwist had talked about some savings that we've had as we've gone through some of these projects, and, and in a few slides, we'll talk about things that we would like to do with some of that savings. That's one place that we're looking. We're thinking we've got some savings, let's go ahead and equip additional buses with video surveillance systems. We think that's one place that certainly might make sense. Completed projects in the renovated buildings, so these are all the previous phase buildings, the technology cabling is all done, so this would be the, the data cabling in the walls and in the data closets and that sort of thing. Classroom technologies, again, document cameras, projectors, sound enhancement, that sort of thing. PA systems are completed, video surveillance is completed, and network electronics. And when we say network electronics, we're talking about the switches and the routers that are handling our data traffic over our network. We do have some pictures, and some of these you've probably seen before in previous updates, but we think it's a very nice way to show some of the more visible technologies that we've put in there that are really directly benefiting the students in the district. This is Coolidge, a classroom at Coolidge from 2013. This is a classroom from Coolidge in 2015. And you can see, and we'll, we'll focus in on a couple of different things here. You can see the students at the front of the room in front of image displayed from an interactive projector, if you want to actually start advancing it. So there's that interactive projector. It hangs up over the board, projects down onto the board. We can show videos. We can display what's on the teacher computer. It is interactive, so the students can go up and interact with it as if it were an interactive whiteboard. It's just that intelligence is in the projector instead of a whiteboard piece of hardware. Over in the corner, over the teacher station, we have our sound enhancement. So we have teacher and student microphones, amplifiers and speakers in the classrooms to allow for solid sound enhancement in, in all of our classrooms. We have document cameras to allow hard copy documents to be, then to be displayed up on that interactive projector that we looked at. We've got wireless access points all throughout the districts and, and have significantly increased the capacity from a wireless standpoint district-wide. This one picture doesn't really do justice for what I'm going to try to explain from it. This is one of the data closets from 13 to 15. And, and you can see what in 2013 was, what I, the, the technical term for that is spaghetti, in terms of, of cabling, that, kind of all over the place, needed to be dressed up, cleaned up, that sort of thing. This is what it looks like now in 2015 in terms of much more clean and organized and easier to manage for Tim's staff. But really, the other thing that we're speaking to here is all of the backend infrastructure that I talked about there. You know, those previous pictures talked about the things that you can easily walk into a classroom and see and put your hands on, but there's so much more that we've done in terms of that structured cabling in the walls, in terms of the server environment, and the storage area, network environment, the network, network electronics, phone systems, that sort of thing. And, and this is just one picture to kind of encompass all of that infrastructure that is required to support everything else that we're trying to do from a technology perspective in the district. Here's a, a close-up on one of the iPad carts, so mobile learning devices. And, and you'll see when we get to the budget update, we've got significant budget left, and are planning on putting quite a bit more in terms of mobile learning devices out into the hands of the students in the district. So we think that's definitely a positive. And then just one last shot of, of students, again, mobile learning devices. These are Chromebooks that have been deployed in the district, and you can, can see students engaged in learning activities on those. So that's progress to date. Let's talk about near-term activities in terms of what's in progress right now. So community rooms, substantially completed. We've got a couple of those that still need to be wrapped up. Printers and copiers, again, also substantially completed. That is targeted for completion around the 20th of this month or so, but there'll likely be a little bit of straggle or carry-on work, just to tie up some loose ends after that. But that implementation went very, very quickly. Mobile learning devices, again, we anticipate at least two more large purchases of mobile learning devices. This may be iPads, this may be Chromebooks, that still has yet to be determined. We're planning on soliciting feedback from teachers in the district in terms of what the most impactful devices are, so we're spending that money in the right way. And obviously, before we spend that money, we'll be coming back to you for action on that. Upcoming projects for summer of 17, we're talking about Garfield, Churchill, Stevenson, and ancillary buildings. Structured cabling needs to be done in those buildings still. Classroom technologies, community room implementations, PA systems, video surveillance, network electronics. So we still have a lot of projects that as we phase these projects and similarly with construction, a lot of that work still needs to be done. Longer-term activities, so upcoming projects in summer of 18 district-wide, first item is digital signage. So this would be a display similar to what we're looking at, or looking at the presentation on here, but these would be permanently mounted displays at strategic places within the buildings that are then able to run essentially, it's, it's digital signage, announcements, bulletin boards, you know, that, that sort of thing, in each one of our buildings. Again, mobile learning devices, and at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I won't say what that one is one more time. Upcoming projects in summer of 18 at Buchanan, Webster, Churchill, and ancillary buildings, again, more technology cabling, more classroom technologies, community rooms, PA systems, video surveillance, and network electronics. So we've, we've come a long way. We've got a lot that, that still needs to be done. Budget update, the slide is empty because of the handouts that I brought around to y'all, so hopefully don't take that as we're not giving a budget update. So this is a, a high-level budget as the technology budget was developed in, in the, for the bond. It's in those categories that the original program of service is developed, was developed with. So again, classroom technology, community rooms, mobile learning devices, wireless network, computers, communications. Communications includes the phone system as well as the PA systems. Safety and security, which is where our video surveillance, including bus video surveillance budget lives. The network, printers and copiers, servers and storage, technology cabling, other technology which are various allocations for some curriculum-specific technologies and, and that sort of thing. And then we've got line items for furniture, our technology contingency, and then the, the professional fees for our technology designers at Barton Mallow. As you read this across, we've got the bond category, that's really for my edification in terms of the useful life of these different technologies, whether or not it's infrastructure or instructional technology, that sort of thing. The original bond budget from the program of service, and, and I promise you, I won't read you all the numbers on this spreadsheet, but I just want to kind of explain how we walk through it. But you can see where those original budgets were, and them totaling out to the original $30.6 million that we had for technology. Next column over is, is approved budget changes. There are a couple of different things going on in this category. Number one, as we come to you for an award on a project, you'll recall, we typically ask you to award a specific amount for the project as well as set aside a certain amount of contingency. So that's us moving money out of the contingency category into the specific projects as you have awarded it to us. There are also a couple of budget transfers that have gone on in there as we've needed additional money for cabling, for example, and we've had savings in other areas. We've needed to do some transfers for those sorts of things. As we've needed to transfer money out for furniture, because that was not in our original budget, and it was one of the first things that we, we did come back to move out of technology, that would be represented in there. We could certainly get you detail on any of these items if, if it's so desired, but these, these would be all of the budget transfers between the categories to date. And you can see appropriately, it's a wash. It's a zero sum on that one, because all we're doing is moving money between categories. And then the next column over is that transfer to construction that Ms. Okwist had just talked about, the million dollars there. And you can see the various categories that that is coming from. And we basically looked at projects that were essentially substantially completed. We weren't going to have a need to come back because of additional scope or that sort of thing, and we had good savings from our bidding process, and, and it's just the places where it made sense to move that money out.
So that's that million-dollar recapture.
Okay, so that is, that's the one on here. This is not an additional or a prior?
That is not an additional. That is exactly the million dollars that was talked about earlier.
So yes, I already did tell me about it.
Yes. So if you sum those columns across, you get to that current budget, and you, and, and really the, the, you know, thing that stands out here is the million-dollar difference in the total overall budget. We started at 30.6 million. We're down to 29.6 million after we've moved a million out to, out to construction. After that, you can see commitments to date. This would be all contracts and all purchase orders against these budget categories. You can see the contingency balance in each one of those areas, and you can see that in cabling, again, we've, we've come short on contingency and, and likely, cabling is one of those things that the scope always seems to grow on in these projects as we go through these implementations, and always seems to be, we need more drops here and there for additional computers or, or what have you. So that would be why that number is showing the way it is, but from an overall contingency perspective, the budget's still healthy. You can see a, a set aside or a reservation for future projects. I, I will walk you through those. From a classroom technology perspective, we're just calling that reserve for future ads. So as we reconfigure buildings and we look to outfit more classrooms, we're expecting we're going to need to buy more of that equipment. That, and, and we think it just makes sense to, to hold that money for now for those future ads. It's one of the reasons why this was a category we did not touch when we were looking for money to move out to construction. You can see the 4.8 million still left in total in, in mobile learning devices. That is the vast majority of our remaining balance, and that is just, again, the, the planned additional purchases of mobile learning devices that I talked about earlier. You can see in communications, the original budget of 322,000 that we had for the digital signage project that I said would be coming next summer, so that is still there. In safety and security, we've got a balance in that budget of about $134,000. If you'll recall, the original award was for just over half of the fleet of buses in the district, and that contract was for about $125,000. We're hopeful we can outfit the balance of the fleet, or if not the majority of the balance of the fleet in the district with video surveillance with the balance that we've got in that budget. In the network, we've got a few different things going on there. We've got firewall upgrades that need to happen. We've got some fiber work that we're eyeballing, but we would like to, and you'll see in the, the next slide, talk about potentially using some additional savings to expand the scope of that fiber work, and we can talk about why on that. Redundancy for the internet connection into the district, those are the things that were originally budgeted that we're still holding money for in the network category. From a cabling perspective, again, reserve for future ads. Again, cabling's just one of those things that scope always grows on. I've never been through one of these where it does not. And then other technology, we've got that entire category still remaining. There are things in there like software deployment tools, or you brought the list, how about that? Asset management or asset tagging systems that would be radio frequency-based, so as we're putting all of these Chromebooks out there, you know, we need to asset tag them. We need to track them. We need to make sure they're not growing legs and walking away. But from an inventory management standpoint, we should be tracking these things. It's one of the things that we had in the budget was an asset management solution. We'd explored things like streaming video solutions, so we've got all these projectors in the classroom. Let's see what we can do to put something in there that will allow us to start streaming content out to the classrooms. Conference bridge for district-wide is in that list. Video on demand I talked about. So those are some of the things that live in that other technology category, and we haven't addressed any of them yet. Things that we very often will leave towards the end of a bond, because candidly, if we start to run short in some of the other areas, those are some of the, kind of the more nice-to-have projects as opposed to critical requirements. So it just makes sense to leave them until the end. And then you can see the contingency balance that we've got that has not yet been awarded out. So from a future project standpoint, we've still got just over $7 million worth of work to do. So that is money essentially that is reserved or allocated, and we're expecting to spend that money on those things. And then in the balance category, we've got just over $2 million left. That's true savings. That's, that's money that doesn't have, that we're not eyeballing anything for at this point, at least formally in the budget. We do have some very good ideas on where that money could be spent. This is above and beyond the million dollars that we're moving out to construction, and candidly, there are some critical needs in the district that we think it would make sense to give consideration to for those funds. So, high level, but hopefully this gets you the, the level of intelligence that you need for the, for the technology budget. Any questions, comments, concerns before we talk about what we'd like to do with that $2 million?
So I think one of the, the biggest things that I was excited about when we originally talked about this was that we were going to have a central location for the security, the PA systems were going to, and the phone systems, everything was going to be connected so that we could send information out to all the schools simultaneously or operate it from a central location. Can you update us on that a little bit?
Yep. So the, the phone, new phone system that's going in absolutely is centrally managed in terms of, you know, maintaining what handsets are where and that sort of thing. PA system is also centrally managed with the ability to push communications out either to specific buildings, specific zones, that sort of thing, or, or district-wide. So the, the print solution that we talked about also very much centrally managed. It's something of a design theme when it comes to technology these days, is that the, the degree to which you can do that, you absolutely do, and I think we've been pretty successful at it.
Okay. But the, the schools that we, some of the schools that we haven't renovated yet are still not.
Still coming online with some of that stuff.
That's all internal infrastructure that we need to wait, but.
Absolutely right. Absolutely right.
That's great. And what have the responses been? Is it, has it been, I, I have to imagine that it's been great for everybody that's in those buildings.
Tim, you can probably speak to that better than I can.
Yeah, the response has been really positive to the, to those systems in the buildings, the PA systems, the way they're interconnected with the sound sys, sound field systems in the classrooms. So if a teacher's watching a, a video or there's something playing over the speakers, and when an announcement comes on, it automatically turns the volume down in the classroom on whatever they're listening to so that they can hear the announcement. When that's over, the volume comes back up. The ability for the, the tie-in between the phone system and the PA system, which allows the principal, a teacher, whomever, to be able to pick up the phone anywhere in the building, dial in the code, and be able to make an announcement building-wide, has been a, a feature that a lot of the principals have, have liked because they can, wherever they happen to be at the time, they need to make that announcement, whether it be in the lunchroom, whatever, they can do it building-wide or specific to that, to that area. But the, the response.
And voicemails can go directly, or go directly to the email?
Yeah, the, yeah.
So no longer having to code in and listen to your messages?
Any voicemails that come in go to their email so that they can listen to them or write on their computer. In addition, faxes, very similar, the faxes that come in now will go to whoever the designated person is, or there can be multiple people, and that fax comes in and comes to their email as well, as opposed to having the fax machine sitting there with faxes coming in. And then the new copier system allows for a much easier process for faxing directly from the copiers. Faxing or emailing, basically, with just a couple of pushes of the button, now you can send faxes directly from, from those machines, as well as through the email system. You can send a fax to the computer as well, so.
And just, I think one of the other things that really excited me is that, and maybe you can just address it for the new board members and the public, is the 911 capabilities, where if you call, they can locate you. Can you just cover that?
Yeah.
I just, I found that really, you know, for a, a number of different circumstances to be very nice.
Yeah, and Matt may be able to jump in too, but I know that we, you know, our, the new system, obviously all the new systems, the voice-over-IP systems are set up to be E911 compliant, I guess, and that's a, a ruling that's kind of coming down. It keeps getting pushed out a little bit, you know, every few years to, because it is something that everybody's going to have to adhere to, but it's an expensive process, obviously, to put those new phone systems in and have everything set up the way it's supposed to be. But obviously, it can, down to the classroom, if somebody dials 911, it shows up at the police station. It will actually say what classroom and which building they're calling from so that they, they know exactly where to go. Plus, we work really closely with the police department in providing them with. So that they, they know exactly where to go. Plus, we work really closely with the police department in providing them with, um, maps of our buildings and up-to-date locations. So that, you know, they can look at a map of the building and see exactly where that classroom is and be able to identify that classroom from outside the building if necessary.
So this is actually legislation that was passed four or five years ago and has since been deferred year on year, you know, year in and year out. The requirement legally is that any call out to nine-one-one, they are able to identify the location of the origination of that call down to a seven thousand square foot level. It's something that, uh, a lot of school districts, a lot of businesses are, are candidly struggling with becoming compliant too. Because in the past, uh, the only thing that was passed from a location standpoint was an address and that's all the legacy phone systems are capable of doing. So basically what we've done is, you know, from a safety and security standpoint, obviously a substantial benefit there. But you're also now ahead of the curve from a compliance standpoint. You don't have to worry about this legislation that everybody's struggling with. It, it's not even being enforced yet, but you're, you're there, so.
And it's, and it's a challenge too, even with the new phone systems. You know, our, our phone systems are designed and set up so that during the day, calls from the outside, uh, to a particular classroom go directly to the teacher's voicemail. So it doesn't interrupt teaching if somebody has, happens to have their direct number and calls in. That poses a potential issue for nine-one-one because if somebody picks up the phone and dials nine-one-one and hangs up, when the police try to call back in, it obviously, you don't want to go into voicemail. So there's unique challenges like that that come up that, you know, required us to secure another, you know, thousand plus phone lines, uh, phone, you know, phone numbers and extensions to be able to set up a whole separate system for each classroom that has a, a number that isn't restricted. And when a nine-one-one call is made, that's the number it goes out on so that they can get back in if they need to. Just a lot of things behind the scenes that were really challenging. And also explain why I think they keep, uh, moving that timeframe out because it is something that's pretty difficult and expensive to.
Public Service Commission has gotten a fair bit of feedback on that one over the last few years, so.
Thank you, Brian.
And this might be for Mrs. Oakley. How has the bus video been received? Is that helpful for our bus drivers? Has that been a good thing for them?
I'll actually, um, I think if you'll hear that. They actually, it, I've, I've watched some of the videos, heard the sound. It's incredible. It's incredible video. It's clear. It's, the, the sound is great. We've got, uh, three cameras in a bus, so back, front and actually over the driver hitting the door, um, as students, uh, enter and exit. The, um, software can be put on a, a computer and, uh, you know, if a principal says, I sort of, you know, I need bus A B. It was this run. We can kind of narrow down the times. It does take somebody watching it.
Right, right.
You know, you're never going to get around, I shouldn't say never, who knows what's going to end up happening in the future. But you have to watch that, that piece, but you can narrow it down and watch it, but it's very clear. You can even zoom in off of what you have and it doesn't become grainy or pixelated. We were zooming in on one particular video on, on a seat. We were trying to see if something was on a seat. And it, it came in very close before it started to, to, to pixel, but we were pushing halfway across the bus onto a specific seat. So it was, it's very good. Fortunately, we haven't had tons of use as far, you know, because we're not. Yeah, exactly. But, but a couple of principals I've, I've, I've talked to about it. Um, Mr. Archibald has, has looked at some video. Mrs. Streffin, the supervisor in transportation, has sat down with her drivers or herself looking for certain things when they get reported. It's, it's worked really well.
Has it reduced the amount of, just by having it in this, there?
I, I think, uh, I think that what happens is if you ever watch Big Brother or any of those shows, in the first couple of days, they're all like, oh my gosh, there's a camera on me. But then people tend to go bad. They forget and they go back to their natural behaviors. When you first say, oh, there's a, a camera on this bus, you, you, you know, a driver, a student, whoever might say, oh, there's a camera on this bus. Believe me, in time, you, you sort of forget they're there because they're not sticking out. It's just a little bubble on, on, on the, on the camera. And, uh, fortunately, we don't have horrific bus behaviors all the time. So I think their, most students' natural default is, is respectful enough, but they are on there and they work well.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Francis. And I, I'll mention that with regard to the video surveillance in the schools. I was actually talking with a principal today who said the clarity of those videos has been a game changer. And they are able to see, you know, down a hallway, be able to see with clarity. I mean, they were, they were, um, relatively challenging to really get a good look at things, um, previously. And that one of the things is that there, that, um, she had commented that there is quite a bit of word of mouth amongst the students that, that, that video surveillance is, is more prevalent because we've added a number of cameras, um, too, especially, um, at our, um, upper middle and high schools. And so, um, as that, as that grows, that information has been shared as well.
And that's been, I mean, that was one of the primary focuses when we were looking at the security systems, not only for the buildings, but for the buses. Um, and we, I'm sure we discussed it with you when we presented it because some of our options were more of an analog system versus digital. And that was one of the drawbacks to those analog systems was you just didn't have the, the clarity. So that was one of our primary focuses and it's, it's turned out, um, that the investment was well worth it.
Definitely.
Other questions?
Uh, just about the Chromebooks or the, uh, mobile learning devices. You said we're planning to purchase more. Maybe you're not there yet at the elementary, at the secondary. Is there a breakout or we haven't even gotten there yet?
We, we purchased last year approximately thirty-seven hundred devices, um, and they were allocated to the buildings based on student population. So they'll be, essentially this year, we'll be looking at doing the same thing again over the summer. Yes, so that everybody gets an allotment each year, so.
One of the original ideas with, with the mobile devices was not to do them all at once and then have them potentially have end of life all at once. So we're rolling them in, um, in, in phases purposely.
So is this like a second phase equal to the first phase or a smaller?
We're anticipating it being equal to it this way, yeah.
One of the things that is really important is whenever you are, um, implementing the use of a device, like a mobile device, we really want to make sure that, um, that the devices we're choosing are, have a, are having a meaningful impact and that there being, that this is the right device to continue to purchase. And so one of the things that Mr. Klan and, um, and his folks will continue to take a look at is, are the devices that we've purchased the right devices to continue to purchase? Are there additional needs? Are there some different needs at say a K-two versus, you know, a, you know, middle and, middle and high school level? And so that gives us some of that flexibility. We've gotten feedback all along the way during the pilots of those, of those devices. And so, um, that's, that's another important reason why we, we want to take this in, in steps is to really be sure that we're not just flooding, you know, devices in, but that we have appropriate, you know, uses and that, that they're utilized meaningfully.
I think one of the things that's hard is when a classroom uses the devices and I'm not sure the logistics of it, but only half of the students get a book, a Chromebook or what have you. And then other, the other kids are trying to bring their own in or do, do that sort of thing. I'm not sending a laptop in with my kids in their backpacks because I know what happens to those backpacks.
You're saying kids are rough on technology?
I'm a little, they're a little rough. But, um, I just think it's hard whenever a classroom only has half or, uh, four of the classrooms. So I think if we can provide thirty and if there's thirty-five, enough for each classroom when they get their day or what have you, that it's a whole classroom gets the books. As opposed to some kids get it this day, some kids get it the next day.
Yeah, it'll be nice as we start getting more of them into the building for sure. We, we provided, um, full carts of thirty-six to the buildings in, in, you know, anywhere from probably three carts to maybe eleven carts at a high school level. Three carts at an elementary depending on the, the size of the building. And then some of the buildings have kept them in carts and have checked them out as a whole classroom set to the building. Some have broken them up and put, you know, ten or twelve in a classroom so that they could use them every day. Just kind of varied from location to location how they chose to use them. But they should be getting, uh, I would say at least the same, uh, additional amount this, this next year.
Anything else, questions on that?
I think there's more.
We do have a little bit left, but we're done.
One more, one more. So one of the things that we're looking at these, this is the longer-term activities. So for, for a portion of that, that money that we have, um, in our, our balance, we're looking to something like a, a twenty-first century learning environments in some of our buildings. I would say, uh, what we're focusing on for this particular pilot would be at the high school level. Uh, this is particularly Churchill, uh, but if, if it goes as well as we were anticipating, we'd like to look at that at the other high schools. Potentially the middle school depending on, on what the use case is for it. But, um, some collaboration space, spaces within those buildings for the students. We're seeing that, a big trend in that, especially in the, in the upper, upper grades and other places. It's a very popular, um, and helpful thing for them right now. And that's setting up, um, basically screens similar to this, interactive, that they can connect their devices to, uh, around the classroom so that they can break into small groups of, you know, four or five students. And they can all sit and work at one particular screen with their devices, all being able to connect. And then a teacher being able to distribute their, their video to all the screens around the classroom or control, also to interact with those students. And whatever they're doing, if a particular student wants to show what they're doing, it can show up on all the rest of the screens for the rest of the class or they can work individually. That's one of the ideas that we're looking at. We're in the very early stages of looking at what's available equipment-wise, uh, techno, what the technology is. We're wanting to do some, um, surveying, have some discussions with some of the, the teachers in that area to find out what, you know, what they're thinking and what some, get some of their feedback on, on what would be helpful. But our plan at this point is to look at putting something at, uh, a space at Churchill, um, as a pilot and to try out and see how that goes. Any questions on that or additional, Andre or anybody?
Yeah, we'll bring you some more information. We're really looking at, um, what's, what's being utilized in, in some other schools and some of the media centers. And I'm really looking at a separate space, so not within a current classroom, within a space within the school that can be utilized for a teacher. You know, maybe teachers to send a couple of groups of students down or a teacher to bring a class down to utilize and work on a project. Really to have some of those flexible learning spaces that, um, have the technology set and ready to go where they can bring their mobile devices. And, um, really that is the way of the world is where we take a look at collaboration of students working together on a project. But having that technology ready, set up, we don't need someone to come down, make sure it's all plugged in and ready to go. We'd like to have a space where, um, in fact, you know, our students will be important, um, feedback for us. Because, you know, as the users of that environment, they will probably have, um, some of the most creative ideas about what we should look to include. And again, we, we would want to be able to do something that we're able to replicate minimally, um, at each of our high schools. And then if possible, um, at the middle schools as well.
Additional bus video surveillance, which we, we've already discussed. I also have to add to that too, that I've, I've spoken with several of the bus drivers too. And, and I think from their perspective, um, they really like the ease of use. They really, it's one of those, it's just working, uh, kind of things. They can tell if it's on. They've got a button on their dash if there's any type of an incident at all. All they have to do is touch that button. It marks the video, um, not only, but the, the geolocation of where they are at the time it happens, but also, um, the time in the video and marks it. So it's easy to find as they come back later to, to look for it. So that was some of the few, some of them don't even know where any of the other stuff is on the bus. They just know that there's a button on their dash and that, and that when they push it and, and get back to the yard and have a conversation, it gets addressed. So that's, that's a really nice, nice feature. Matt had alluded to this earlier, the outside fiber replacements. We have approximately twenty-nine miles of private fiber in Livonia for the school district that's, that's hung on the, on the wires or on the poles out there. We've got some money allocated for some redundancy and some replacement of some of the troublesome segments we have out there. Our, our biggest, um, nemesis, I'd say, are the squirrels. In, in the area, they, they, for whatever reason, absolutely love to chew on the fiber.
If it's aerial fiber, it's squirrels. If it's underground fiber, it's backhoes.
Exactly. It is happening quite often and it's, you know, thousands of dollars every time a squirrel chews through one of those lines. In addition to the outage time that we have, um, trying to locate where that is on a pole or wherever. You know, we do have equipment that tells us distance from where we are to the break, but trying to go, trying to go find where a squirrel, because they don't chew it in half and leave it hanging. They just chew into it halfway and leave it and then you have to try to determine where that is. There's some, and just that, in addition to the fact that right now our fiber is about fifteen years old. Average life expectancy is probably around twenty. So we're getting to the point where we need to consider not only replacing some of our problem segments, but also maybe even replacing, um, the, all the fiber that we have out there. And if we did at that point, we would look at replacing it with what's called armored, uh, fiber so that it's.
Right.
Their teeth don't like that and it, it makes it, so the squirrels, we, garbage trucks seems to be another issue that we've had in some of the neighborhoods. Because with the fiber getting on in age, uh, sometimes some of the, um, lashing has come loose and maybe the fiber has started to droop in certain locations. And then that garbage truck comes through the neighborhood and tears it out of the pole and drives away. And leaves us to, again, try to track it down and, and find out. So it could just be one building. If they hit it in certain locations, it could take down four, five, six buildings. It just depends on where they hit that in the, in the path as to how big of an effect it has, so. We do have scheduled right now, any, anytime, uh, our fiber contractor should be going out and doing what's called a ride out of all twenty-nine miles of fiber. So they'll review. We like to try to get it before the leaves come out on the trees. It's a little easier to identify some of the problem areas. Where we have loose lashing, squirrel guard, things that have, that have come off or hanging down, uh, things that need to be addressed. And we'd like to take that information from them because they'll be able to provide us with, here's what we think are all the problems that you have in different areas. Here's what we think the priority issues are. We can actually hopefully take that information and look at, does it make sense to go through and start replacing large segments and doing all these repairs or should we look at, um, a larger scale replacement of all of it while we're, while we're up there, so.
We're going to keep investigating, look at that, that report and, and make some recommendations. Because it is, it's, it's not flashy, but it's your infrastructure as much as, as anything else. And when, when it goes down into a building or more than one building, it wreaks havoc on, on the lessons for the day.
Internet, there's network, there's phones.
Everything from your building, your building controls and, and boiler systems, uh, to the, to the phones, the PA, everything is, is networked. Including not just the computers and the wireless and everything like that anymore. It really has an extremely significant effect on, on almost every aspect of the building, so. And so in addition to that replacement and, and putting something up that's going to be a little tougher and give us another fifteen to twenty years if we, if we go that route, we would look at making some small alterations to our, uh, routing of the fiber so that we have more of a redundant system. So when there is a cut, there's another way back, you know, around a different direction. So even though there's that cut, we can reroute the traffic the other way while that's getting repaired. Or maybe reduce the number of buildings that are affected depending on where that cut is.
Does the repair money come out of the contingency? Where do we find that repair type, those types of things?
So we've got four hundred thousand in the budget for fiber work already. That's not enough to replace your entire wide area network. This would be one of the things that we think would bear consideration for the balance, the additional savings, that two million that we've got across all categories. I think it would certainly behoove you, once the, um, initial investigation is done, to at least give it consideration.
Do you mean the general repair is if, if someone go down at a school and?
Yeah, if there's an issue and everything, that has to come out of a different.
Yeah, I misunderstood the question. I was talking about replacing, uh, specific troublesome segments.
Those are our general fund out.
Yes, absolutely correct.
Okay, so we have to make sure we have, try to have some in there for that.
We do.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, more?
No, we're going to put you out of your misery right there with squirrels.
Thank you very much.
My black lab will continue to hunt squirrels.
Send him over to my house, please.
Thanks for the, uh, report, guys.
The voice, by the way, uh, is, is from Rob Gregor from Barton Mall, who also works closely with, with Tim and with the district. Rob didn't come on up, um, during this presentation, but he was, he was here as, as, as needed backup, so.
And he's been an important part of, both he and Matt have been an important part of our planning and our, our work as we've, as we've moved forward. So thank you, Tim. Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I don't see Mr. Francis moving, so.
Same, so just in case, okay.
I don't, uh, that's just an update. We don't need to.
We appreciate the time, but we really thought it was important that you have that deep look, especially as we were talking tonight about the overall bond budget. It just puts it all in, in context.
All right, so now we're down to, uh, C. Phase two sinking fund projects.
Um, I do want to make note regarding the sinking fund projects to give you a, a bit of an update. This is kind of how things play out. Sometimes when we were at our. of an update. This is kinda how things play out. Sometimes uh when we were at our study session two weeks ago, I had mentioned that uh the quote unquote Phase Two Sinking Fund Projects were gonna consist of Buchanan Pavement, Churchill, I'm sorry, Holmes Water Main and Churchill Tennis Courts. Uh the, the bid was opened uh last Thursday for the paving projects. Uh it was bundled with the tennis courts at Churchill as well as the pavement at Buchanan. Um we had two uh that presented bids, neither of which qualified because they were missing required legal documents. So we have no presentation for you with regard to the, the paving with Buchanan and Churchill's tennis courts. I will give you a brief update that we had a meeting this morning as to what we, we would take from here. We are going to put out again. Uh we're actually gonna put it out in a slightly different manner. Um we're gonna break things apart and we're actually um real quick, we're gonna get the, the Buchanan out. Um Wednesday morning is our, our target time and then we're gonna break out the Churchill piece and actually put a different timetable on that. I had a, a long conversation on the phone and then in person day with uh Mr. Mark Hague, the athletic administrator over at Churchill. He spoke to his tennis coach. So we're gonna try to take a different tact and it might, um it looks like we're going to actually go into the fall. Um but he's able to, Mr. Hague is able to move practices. Their advantage being the, the, the summer in August when students aren't in, they can get those things moved around. He just said, absolutely, we'd much rather have it done because timetable wise, we couldn't get that done in the summer in time at this point for what occurred in time for the season in August. Churchill is in agreement that they'd rather move practices and, and do other things with their fall tennis to have it done in, in the fall and have it ready for spring season um next year because they're, they're looking to host some tournaments, et cetera, in, in the spring of 18. Otherwise, it would be summer 18 project and they didn't wanna wait for that, which is legitimately said, your, the choice is yours if we can make it work. So we're gonna put those back out to bid. Um any questions on, on that? Okay, so we have then remaining the infamous Holmes Water Main, which we've been discussing uh on and off for, for quite some time. Um we did get those bids in and I think you have the, a letter that was passed out um from Plant Moran Cressa?
Yep.
And you, you wanna, you wanna just jump in?
Yeah, sure. So again, uh NTH Consultants, um they were the engineer uh for that scope of work. And really through the um February, March timeframe, put together construction documents, reviewed it with the bond team, looked at budgets. And in April, um mid-March, they issued those formally, so advertised them on the state's website. Uh as Mr. Francis indicated, proposals were received on April 6th. Uh there is a bid tabulation sheet which we'll review shortly. Um so again, those interviews were conducted on, on the 7th and attended by NTH and LPS going forward, just to ensure the scope of work, the project's schedule manpower and all those other requirements were in, uh in place. Again, 10 weeks is, seems like a lot of time, but when you go through permitting and starting and phasing and close out all that fun stuff, that 10 weeks gets closed in really quickly. Um so again, again, after the interviews, um McComb Pipeline Utilities is a consideration. There's a hard construction cost of 324,815 dollars. We would ask that there is a construction contingency of roughly 40,000 dollars. So we're going underneath the ground and as heard from technology backhoes like to find a lot of interesting things. Um so again, the total project award would be 364,815. Um as Mr. Francis mentioned, uh the Buchanan Churchill, they will be a rebid, uh again coordinated, uh accordingly later for the summer and the fall scope of work going forward. So um you also have in the packet a, um a letter from NTH, again, who's the engineer of record uh for the Holmes Middle School project. And again, they're really taking a look at making sure that the size of the piping, the connections, et cetera, adhere to in terms of the specifications. Um so you have your bid tabulation sheet, uh recommendation from us as well as the NTH letter. So this is it open back up to President Burton, Ms. Holquist, or rest of the board?
Any follow-up questions? Tammy, Tammy?
Um, okay, so the two paving projects, um but we were gonna pave Holmes. Did I miss something? We, we, we're gonna do, we've got the underground taken care of.
We already did the paving project for the five uh buildings previously. The board voted on that. We had that bid voted on. We're gonna do the um Water Main first.
Yep.
Then the paving.
Nope, but, oh, so we didn't bid out the Holmes paving yet?
Yes, no, we did. We had that locked in. We're gonna do the Water Main as a separate. They'll do that first and then in time for the paving.
I was thinking that we, okay.
There's nothing like a fresh cut in the asphalt.
No, I understand that they go, which order they went, but I was thinking that it was in this package that we didn't have enough, uh, we didn't have any bits for, good bits for. I was thinking it was in there. I forgot that we-
Yep, no, we're okay. We actually are very fortunate that's-
Lots of bits.
Yeah, we're looking good.
Oh, just a quick, when is this slated to be done? This coming up soon?
Mm-hmm.
This summer?
Yeah, again, it's gonna be dovetailed very closely with the paving contractors. So again, NTH being the, on the design side of the paving, we're gonna have kickoff meetings once the board takes action um with McComb uh piping. Again, you can kinda see the bid tabulation sheet. They went through a 23-point checklist, price breakdown and make sure we're looking at apples-to-apples comparison uh for those projects going forward, so.
And this is a very needed, not, not that we haven't already brought this up a couple of times in the past, a very needed uh project with the, with the Water Main.
So where you are gonna do the Buchanan paving before you do this additional Buchanan work, the new construction that we have reallocated money and that will work out fine?
Right. They're not gonna bring the type of heavy equipment. We generally, with the large-scale renovations that we've been doing, we finish a building, for example Franklin, we finished the two-year program. This summer, we're gonna do the paving project. The type of uh heavy equipment that causes extra damage won't be needed at Buchanan because it's been renovated. We're going in and doing some different, different things to bring it up to what the other buildings have, but their rooms have been updated. There's lights, there's, there's flooring, there's ceilings, et cetera.
There will be no skylifts or cranes or that type of heavy equipment. It'll be, I'll say, service trucks, pickup trucks, cargo trucks.
And even though we're delaying that until May, would, that work still will be done this summer prior to the start of school at Buchanan. So unlike the tennis courts, we are confident we will be able to get that work done.
Yeah, the problem with tennis courts, it's similar with, with synthetic turf or track is you've got the understructure, which is your soils, and you have to do the pavement, it has to be in lifts and you have to light that for the cure before you can even put on the, I'll call it the prep coating. And then the surface coating actually has some requirements and so it's-
And then fencing after that once that's all done, so.
Unfortunately, it's, it's not a one or two week project, but it's um again dovetailed and appreciate the athletics flexibility to get that done, so.
Okay. Anything else on that?
We would ask for that to be on the, the director-
We need to put this on the regular agenda. Okay, then we'll go to uh D Churchill Bond Project.
All right, so there's three ring binders. Um have a plethora of information uh for that. Um so again, in the packet itself, you'll see the table of contents. Um this will be the Churchill Bond Projects. We'll turn it to Type A, so very similar reward recommendation letter. So again, the construction documents were actually issued January 23rd. On February 10th, proposals for bid categories, again, these are some of the remaining and balance of the bids. There were, there was not enough coverage for those bid tabulations sheets. So again, with the assistance of the bond team, um with George Ock's recommendation letter, uh you'll take a look at some of the awards recommendations for the revised totals, including the hard construction. So again, taking a look, it's on A2, our after recommendation letter. Uh this will be the hard constructions, CMPs, construction procedures and variances going forward, so.
So just as a, a quick reminder that we had the vast majority of the Churchill Bond already um voted on by the board and at the time we said there was a couple of items that we weren't ready with yet. One was the painting, which is what, what you're looking at in that. Uh we were doing some adhesion tests over at Churchill. Uh last week, they were looked at. So we're, we're narrowing down. Um there'll be-
Epoxy quarters?
Yeah, the, the, essentially the product we needed to find out, we put a couple of them on there, make sure that it was going to adhere. There's a little bit of difference between how it's adhering in the, the classrooms versus um the hallways. I think the hallways have been painted over far more times, you know, different groups, et cetera, like to paint the hallways up. Uh long story short, though, there, there's a, a change from what we originally thought we would do with regard to, to paint, but it's, it's gonna be relatively cost neutral with regard to labor will be different because it's less coats, but the, the product itself would be a little more expensive, but it'll be a single quote, those types of things. But what we're looking at is, is the paint. The other piece was the construction manager um for that. So these are the two pieces that we're finishing off in totality, the Churchill Bond.
Is this paint gonna work?
I, I had said in multiple meetings-
She's been tested by Sharon Williams, right.
Um if nothing else works in the world, please make the paint work. Um so they were doing multiple tests and Sharon Williams has been out. Uh we, we've had tests, we've had multiple products, uh different types of, of primers, different bases. Um yeah, I wanna say we threw the kitchen sink at it.
We threw the kitchen sink in it.
I think, I think instead though, we should say we threw some things on the wall and saw it stuck.
That's right.
That's something you had to come up with. It's a good one. Um so yes, we're, 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 we're pleased with the way it adhered.
Okay, but you said there's, there's an, it might be an issue between how it's adhering in the classrooms versus in the hallway. Are, are we gonna end up with two different products?
Well, you have epoxy in the hallways, which is more high abuse um adhesion versus the oil base, which would be in the classrooms, which is less substantial to, I'll call it continuous bumping and, so.
And that's why we wanted two different areas and, and see how it, it worked.
Okay. Did you have a question?
I, this is getting way ahead of ourselves, but if you're putting epoxy on the walls and let's say the, the hallways, you know, 15 years from now, they need to paint. Are they gonna be able to paint over epoxy or is, are they back to-
The epoxy is the base.
Right.
The base?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then the paint over, so they don't hear. The big piece is the paint adhering and that's what's been the trouble. There's so many layers. There's different reasons and, and sometimes it's just so many layers. It's, it's the weight of it or it's just what had been put on in the past. So we need to get that first, we, we actually need to make sure that the, the, not before that, even the prep work is done properly is step one. And then getting that first type of good primer on there or epoxy primer on there to make sure that the paint will adhere.
Okay.
And, and Sharon Williams has been very, working with us, very good with us, uh working on their suggestions, et cetera.
Okay. Any more on?
No, so again, this would be an action item uh for the upcoming board packet coming forward.
Okay, so we need to put that on, uh, damn. Okay, so are you-
Tab B. So again, this is Grant Elementary School. Um as mentioned at the uh budget updates, uh again, this is the summer work uh for the Grant Fire Protection. Uh again, with French Associates and Ock, uh taking a look at the same timeframe, um early February 10th, there's three proposals received. Again, take a look at the qualifications and the um recommendations for that. Uh there's an allocation for the fire protection system at Grant. Um you'll take a look on B2, which again kinda gives you the budget of actuals of the variables.
Okay, can I, can I clarify? Are we down to F now?
No, this is all, yes, I'm sorry, we did jump.
Okay, we jumped down to F, okay.
Yep, yep. Um let me real, real quick, since Paul, we should really, he's gonna go to the bottom because since Paul's up here instead of bouncing neck and forth.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. I thought that's what you did.
Yes, yes.
Didn't forget about you guys.
We wanted to make sure you were paying attention over there.
Okay. I may look like I'm sleeping.
Um so again, taking a look at the um hard construction costs of roughly 28,580 dollars, a construction contingency of 5,716. I'm on attachment B2 uh in the folder. I have total project costs of roughly 35,000, 34,296 dollars, which was better than what was budget. Again, a lot of that was just scope validation, working with the architects and engineers, um really looking at holistically, getting above the standards, look at the impact of that. And again, those documents are everything. So the more accurate they are, the better the bid you get and that's the price we received for that.
And, and to, to not have um any confusion on the bid tab, you will see the title of it says Churchill High School Auditorium and then, and classroom um renovation, but we bid at the same time with Churchill's. Um we did the grant as well. It has its own column with its own title. It's just the font is so small. But that second column is specifically uh the Grant bid.
All right, any questions on?
Talking about page B4.
B4, correct.
Oh, B4.
Did I sing your battleship?
Before.
Bingo. See if anyone was listening.
I got you.
Thanks.
Goodbye.
Okay, so this, uh, any questions on, on B4? All right, then this is an action item as well, right?
Yes, it is. And we'd like to make one more adjustment to the agenda and I apologize, we didn't, I didn't state that at the, at the beginning. I had intended to do that. Um but as Mr. Francis and I were reviewing these items, um we felt that while we had Mr. Will's here, rather than work through the food service item, that we would cover all the items um in which Plant Moran is involved. So if you would indulge us, we'd like to move up item G as well um and bring Mrs. Scott up to the um, the table as well.
You're up, Mrs. Scott. Is, is that after? Yeah, we can do that after this.
Hi. How you doing?
I'm good.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. It's been a while. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um we are anxiously awaiting our elementary furniture. Uh so following the 2013 bond approval by our community, a furniture committee was established with representation of teachers and principals and cabinet members. And uh after visiting schools in other districts and piloting uh several different options for classroom furniture, a recommendation was made for a standard desk, chair and table to replace the student furniture in the classrooms uh by the committee. The committee members really wanted to focus on the student furniture replacement first. Uh after that recommendation that was brought to the elementary principals, the elementary principals uh researched and solicited feedback from staff about the use of flexible seating uh to optimize the learning environment. Many of our teachers have begun either dabbling with the flexible seating um or have completely transformed their classroom uh to uh, into a flexible seating learning environment so students can choose the best seating option for them to learn and to work on tasks. Uh with this in mind, the principals felt strongly that we should provide some of these options for both our students and our teachers to use. And uh many of the schools have read articles about the benefit of flexible seating. I think a couple of those articles were uh given to you in your packets. Our teachers were able to choose between a classroom with mostly tables and chairs or mostly uh standard desks and chairs to replace the main workstation for the students. Each of the classrooms will also receive a low table that provides a space where students can sit on a rug or a mat uh while they're working or that table can also be raised uh for other types of seating option. There'll be two stand-up desks uh purchased for grades three through six for students to stand while they're working and uh six uh hokey stools will also be available for students to use possibly at small group table uh while working with the teacher or in another area of the room. Um I didn't bring some of those things down here with us uh this time uh because our elevator is having a problem. So um but it's all about the task of choosing what is best for you as a learner for uh doing a specific task. Uh 100% of the main workstations for students um is being replaced in the general education classrooms, the local center classrooms, as well as the MOCHI and the ASD classrooms in K through six. Uh the auxiliary classrooms like our music resource room, EST, and then also our preschool um along uh with looking at some uh other furniture will be considered for the next round of furniture purchases. After receiving the quantities purchased with this first round, we may be able to uh with some of those extras that we're purchasing, we might be able to fit in some of, um, some of those areas. So we wanted to wait. The plan is to keep, um after I talked to Harry Lau, the administrator of operations and facilities, is that right? Um that uh he said that he wanted to keep uh from our current furniture, uh 300 spare uh desks and chairs that are in the best shape uh just in case we need them. Uh the donation market is pretty well saturated. I know they're always concerned about what we're going to be doing with that, but uh the remainder of the desks and chairs and tables uh that are being replaced will be discarded. Um and I think that's about it.
Yeah, so the good part is in 2016, the district did go through a formal request for proposals uh for that, that sequence of purchasing. And one of the outcomes of that is we asked all the vendors to s- solidify their pricing for a three-year time period. So again, knowing the quantities lacking in that pricing, this is more of a, I'll call it an extension of those, those unit prices. So again, knowing the quantities lacking in that pricing, this is more of a, I'll call it an extension of those, those unit prices based on those unit costs. So we didn't see any cost inflation or material increases January first seventeen, which is great. So again, really working with administration and the operations facilities team is the quantities, which are actually gonna be shown on these spreadsheets on C two. And again, the three different providers, interior environments, Staples Business Advantages and the Great Lakes Furniture Supply can be based on their unit pricing that provide for the RFP prices.
And if you have your, I don't know if you have your packet, if you don't, I'm happy to pass this around, but Mrs. Scott hopefully included, in addition to the article, some pictures so you could see what some of this, some of these, you know, unique options for, such as the standing desk or the, the hokey stool or the, the table, the adjustable table, et cetera. So as you take a look at that spreadsheet to which Mr. Wills just referred on C two, those items are, correspond with the items that Mrs. Scott shared in her packet.
Questions, President Burton?
Yes, now how many of the standing desks do you say we're getting?
They're gonna get two for each classroom, grades three through six.
Okay.
So.
Is it intended to be designated for a given student or just kind of an additional?
An additional option.
Space so different students can kind of come and go from that space as needed?
I think we all know that as we're, if you're sitting around in a, you know, in a meeting, after a while, you'll see the adults starting to wanna stand or what, you know, whatever.
Not these meetings.
But we have been known though to sit on, you know, the hokey stools at our meetings though. And I, in fact, I'm sitting on one upstairs in my, at, in my office now and I don't even go back to my, my chair anymore. So, but they're made for to be an option not to sit on all day long, but I kind of like sitting on it all day long.
Same with the stand up tables, et cetera, it's.
It's just an option.
Optional choices.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? So this is an action item as well, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
No, I think.
So, Mr. Johnson, we're prepared to cover the award recommendations for the CM services for the summer, the summer projects that we discussed earlier. So you know, we're gonna be doing some work at, for the GSRP at Garfield, some minor work at Randolph and Frost and Cooper. If you'd like, we're prepared to cover that.
I think we're good, okay. I think we're good to go through that.
If not, we can bring it in May.
Would it be an additional H?
Pardon?
Correct.
It's D, D one?
D one.
Yes.
But yes, if there was an agenda item, it would be.
It would be H.
Correct, correct, it's, it's.
It's an addition.
We call it the X.
It's, it's an addition, but it's, it's pretty much married to the earlier item of, we had originally had AUC as the CM for the Churchill project and, and we're bringing a recommendation to have AUC also for the smaller bits and parts that we have over the summer as well as the Garfield building for skill center programming during the fall.
And I think to double to, to what Mr. Francis is saying is on March twentieth, we did ask the three existing construction management firms who've been doing great work with the district since the bond passed for proposals relative to these remaining projects, if you will. And, you know, from that, are very comparable in fees and staffing and costs. One of the things that we thought was, is really the consistency of having AUC, who again has been with the district for twenty plus years. They knew of their staff that are currently at Churchill, so again, some of that synergy that you would get going forward. And then in terms of the proposed costs and the bid tabulation sheet after Jeff Hamilton's numbers, it's roughly seventy three thousand one hundred sixty nine dollars of staffing and reimbursable costs and CM fees. So as, you know, if you took a look at the other two, obviously AUC was most, I call it certified or comparable price as well as proposed teaming and staffing. So again, it's something that the, the bond team felt very comfortable with presenting for continuation with AUC for the, for this particular project.
So just a couple of quick notes, they are, they have in their proposal a fee for one point eight percent, which is the same that we secured in two thousand thirteen when we began their work with them, and so it would be at that same rate. And again, this is not making a determination for summer of eighteen work.
Right.
This is for just these smaller projects in summer of seventeen. Certainly makes a lot of sense that we have these folks here at Churchill to be able to utilize some current staffing and some efficiencies, which is I think why they were able to come in where they were.
Correct.
We have those folks in the district and so to be able to monitor some of these smaller projects, we were able to have some efficiencies of scale in that regard. And again, that pricing, you know, staying locked in from our original, our original rate was significant as well. We will bring back to you in a few months, a recommendation with regard to summer of eighteen, who will do that construction manager work, but again, we really had a good fortune to work with McCarthy Smith, to work with Barton Mallow and to work with AUC. And we appreciate all of them submitting proposals for the opportunity to continue work with Lebonia Public Schools.
Questions? Just to clarify, we've got the summer and the fall projects, right?
Yes.
Two separate, correct.
Those two are, are together, we have the Churchill summer, which we've already discussed.
Right.
And then we have the summer, the extra pieces, that would be the five classrooms of GSRP over at Garfield. There's a little bit over at Randolph. Am I forgetting anything else on the summer one?
You've got Frost and Cooper.
Frost and Cooper.
Sorry, Frost and Cooper, thank you.
Frost and Cooper and Buchanan.
And then fall, meaning the skill center, Westwood Skill Center.
To be done by.
To be done, yeah, so playing those together, correct.
And they're all together in this, correct? Okay, and this needs to be in the, in the agenda as well?
And if you have any questions on that, please do not hesitate to, you know, to let us know on any of these items as you take a look through that. We'd certainly be, Mr. Francis or I would be more than happy to talk with you about it. Certainly, Mr. Wills is at your disposal as well, if you have additional questions on any of these items before next week.
Okay, good.
All right.
Now we're done, all right.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Wills.
Thank you, no, no.
Appreciate you being here.
No, I appreciate it and again, again, it's like you're doing a hundred ninety five million dollars worth of bond work here, so keep up the great work, so, thank you.
I'd like to introduce and, and call up, oh yeah, for letter E.
For letter E or going backwards?
Sorry, I'm gonna work on my alphabet. Mrs. Kristen Hennessy, she's our, our food services director and Ms. Pat Schuchart, she's our food services supervisor. We're going to talk to you about a point of sales system that I briefly mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we were together. And we're pretty excited about it. It, I mean, as excited as, as one can get over a point of sales system. It, it, it is neat when I, and I sat in the presentation, she's far more excited by it than me because she's actually used it already. But seeing how it works, the, the ease of use, both for our staff but also for the, the families, the parents, the convenience that, that comes up with it. You know, everything having an app nowadays and being able to, to watch your students with their purchasing, being able to add money, all those things. It, it's really neat, so I'm gonna actually turn it over to, to Ms. Hennessy, let her kind of go through it with you and then we'll take questions if you have any.
I think that one of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we're always trying to go into the direction of customer service and how we can give better customer service to our community, which means our parents and our kids. And as we started to look at these, as you all know, that my time is shared between here and Plymouth Canton. So one of the pluses with that is that many times we look at different things that we can garner a partnership with or look at things that one might do and we can share with the other for success. Well, this is one of those situations. They were actually, I forced them, and I should say I forced them to kind of take the bull by the horns and start this a year ago. So we're in our second year with this system. And when we took the initial system, the web based system was not available yet. And so they've decided to do that. So we were kind of waiting, but we wanted to work it out and how it would work. And one of the pluses with this is that there's an online application for the free and reduce program for our parents. And that's really important because in the privacy of their home or in a library or something, they can apply for that. And it's not turning in that application where you might see somebody in the school. And I, I feel personally that that's very, very important in this day and age. You have to be very considerate of people's pride and, and we need to make it as easy as possible. One of the things everybody always says to me is, well, not everyone has a home computer. Well, actually, we all do. If you, I've started to do research and you start to talk to folks, everyone has a phone. And so as we start to look at these programs, we look at apps and ways for parents to access the availability to do things for their students and this program does this. In two thousand fourteen, RISA had a module, MyStar, and it was for the point of sale system, which you've been on. And eight years ago, seven years ago, when I started here, we were only half on it in this district. So we completely merged to getting everybody acclimated with a point of sale system and using a computer and everything else. So we're past that hump. So this kind of transition wouldn't be bad. And so now we're like, they haven't really updated it, there's been some communication errors. And I'm gonna share with you, there's a couple of things like past years' information. I can get it, but it takes a long time because they have to go back into the server and pull it up. With this new system, we always have access to prior year information. And you never know in an audit situation or a parent, many, many times we have a parent call and say, hey, last year my student was at this school and this, I thought I had this money left. And we, we, it's, it's a little bit tougher to verify it. With this new system, it's very easy to verify it. The other thing is, is that, you know, RISA is there to support us and support what happens in the classroom. And so probably one of their, one of their big things is how to have a payment system, right? And sometimes they have what's called PayPal and sometimes that has an issue communicating with their server. This system has a pay system, a convenience system, as I have told Phil before, because parents can still turn money in right at the point of service in terms of write to the cashier or send a check in or anything else. So they're not forced to use this, but from a convenience standpoint, this is part of the system. And I have to tell you, it's a world of difference that we've noticed in Plymouth Canton from going to this. There is a high service fee, but again, it's a convenience fee. So it's the ability of, oh my gosh, I'm standing, I'm, I'm in the bus line or I mean, the drop off line and I've realized I got the notification on this app that we're low and I've gotta put it in. So there's a lot of good pluses with this. We've met with Tim and his group here and we feel that the hardware, there may be minimal things that we need to, to purchase and that is not part of this agreement that I'm showing you, but the Food Service Fund is, can sustain its own replenishment of equipment like that. We've built that up to do this, to make it strong. The other thing is, is I like the fact that there is more cash handling accountability. We can track and, and go back and really make sure that everybody is safeguarded. It's not a get you, it's a safeguard. And through the deposits and, and how we will close out at the end of the day, I feel real good with that. And I feel like we've got a strong process and I know we've talked to Allison about it a great deal on how it's a real positive for us. And, you know, as we talk to our cashiers, we're like, this isn't an I got you, this is to protect you. Because what's there then, we know and, and we can make sure that we have your best interest at heart. We have been able to with this company lock in a three year agreement for this nineteen thousand dollars a year, which is the, the use of the system. That comes out to about a hundred, eight hundred and ninety five dollars a school to have these features and have this ability for our schools, which is really great and it's cloud based. One of the big questions people ask is what happens if we lose power? Because we are for some reason in this vortex right here where we do lose power. Yes, squirrels, we learned about squirrels tonight, yes, I was glad that I heard that, I should have brought that up. Or garbage trucks. So I think that the plus is we can still operate and not go to hand checking off. And right now in our system, when we lose power, we slow down the lines for lunch, which means we add the stress to the administration and everything else because we're handwriting down, I mean, at the high school, it's, I can't even tell you what it's like when it goes down. This way, it's still on the unit, we can still operate and then it'll catch up once the power's off. Offline, yes, which is a great plus.
It was the network, not necessarily electricity, power.
Yeah, you're right, the network.
The network goes down, when it's running per usual, the district is connected. So if, if you're in one building, it's connected to the other. The information becomes centralized, which was a theme from earlier as well. If the network goes down at a specific school, it may not be centralized and live, so to speak. So if a parent puts in money, it wouldn't be able to update on that unit, but the unit still works. The, the CPU continues to work, you continue to run lunch per usual. And when the network comes back up, it simply updates again.
And with this cloud situation, the real time data, the updates for payments and stuff is much quicker, so.
There's no overnight catch up type of thing.
Because right now we have to kind of wait for that cycle. And the other thing is, is with that then, you have some, we have some really tech savvy students out there. And it's amazing what the future brings with what they, I mean, in all reality of what they figure out. And so this way too, it helps us to overcome the potential for double meals or people using other people's accounts or anything like that. Could that still happen? Absolutely it could, but with this, this system, I can tell you from experience, it has been vastly reduced. So those investigations that we spend hours of to watch and have to go back and try, has been really reduced.
So just overall, some high points, again, customer service wise, it, it's an improvement of the current system. And, and RISA is the one that actually took this to bid, knowing that they, their MyStar point of sale system was not as modern as what's out there and they weren't planning to modernize it. So they did an RFP for the entire county, essentially saying, we're gonna use our purchasing power of thirty plus districts and if any of you want to use it, then you have this locked in price. Now to that end, and, and to Ms. Hennessy's credit, not only did we take that, that cost, which was higher than the nineteen six eighty five, and, and Kristen talked to them and said, hold on a second here. You know good and well, as I know, that you're gonna run around telling everybody that you've got Lebonia Public Schools, et cetera, et cetera, give me a better price. They did. And then she called them back and said, now lock it for three years. And they did. So I wanna give kudos to her for bird dogging this and getting us the, the best possible price that we could get.
I think they were just sick of hearing from me.
And this is something that's actually been a long time discussions. When, when Ms. Abbey was here, as the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Business Services, they were discussing it. It's, it's set for within the food services budget and it is an annual cost, as we discussed, that it's locked in for three years. It would come through the, the food services annual budget and we're not locked in. So if something does go sideways, the old system where you're buying servers and housing yourself, we're not putting that upfront cost into it. We actually are gonna be paying the annual and if, again, if, if something else changes, we can get out of this and with a, a minimal upfront fee. And really most of that is gonna be the pushpads for the students to punch in their number, which we can just use on that hardware elsewhere with a future system.
Okay, do you have any questions? Mrs. Bradford?
Just a quick question. You said the app, that you can download the app, is there a fee for the families to?
To use the app?
To use the app.
Absolutely not, the app is free. In fact, the only thing, and my feedback to the company was, interesting enough, it's called My Payments Plus. And I said, you have a bad name. And they said, well, I said, no, you have a bad name because the misnomer is that it's only for payments. So they then said that they have really good marketing tools to, to really share with our parents at open houses to say, no, you don't have to use it just for payments, you can use it to monitor your students' purchases. You can set up notifications, like if it gets down to five dollars. There's like a lot of different features on that, so it's, 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 there's no fee and it goes beyond.
Okay, is there a fee when you make a payment, like, like a?
On the online, there is, there's a percentage, there's a convenience fee and, you know, that's a.
But that's probably a normal thing.
Yeah. We're doing it now with PayPal.
Right, PayPal.
And they're doing a fee. I will tell you, it's a little bit higher, but it's, it is part of it, any, any kind of service that we would do for this, you know.
Like what would be an example, if you put twenty five dollars on the card, what kind of a fee would that be?
It's a straight percentage and it's a four percent, four point two five percent, I think, which is a little hefty.
Okay.
But. But you don't have to use that? No, and that's what we need to stress. There's. There's alternatives. We aren't saying it. It's, it's in a situation where you're doing a prepayment and you're saying, um, the only way to do it is online, then you really can't have them incur that cost, that fee. But for us, we have alternative ways for them. They can stop into our office, they can stop and drop something off, they can send cash every day with their student. You don't have to use that.
Just an option.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Monafield?
And invisible today. Um, so I'm assuming that this is just a general point-of-sale. On the backend, we can load in whatever we need to. It's not based on the products that we're selling, it's just point-of-sale. And then on the backend, we can put in whatever we're selling and update it and change.
We customize it to what fits our district, so whatever our menu is. And one of the pluses with this that I think we noted was that, one of the things that I, I really think is important is in two thousand and ten, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten was implemented. And with that was some regulations. And with thi- this system, we're able to make sure that we are up to date on those regulations on anything we might do for bad debt or how students owe us, or even if we wanted to set it up to, to make sure that we punch it so it recognizes a meal. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of features on this that you can use that really go along with the regulations. Not to mention that it's easy, very, very easily. We could, once a month, import our DC, which is our direct cert from the state, which is our at-risk students. We could actually do that monthly, and it's so much smoother and easier than it is now. Because now we kind of have to go three steps where we can cut that down, which gets them on the program quicker.
And is this something where, um, it's a little bit flexible, like the high school, um, or the, the spirit where the stores, the school stores and stuff can use it, or it's really not that flexible?
Um, no. I mean, I haven't talked to them about that. I didn't go down that, that route. Um, because to be quite, I didn't know where they were with that. I do know that, like, um, that the Patriot Inn, I already purchased, I believe, uh, two, uh, did their own point-of-sale type of thing. So, um, I didn't have any discussions with the stores. Uh, I do know that if you wanted to collect athletic fees or tickets and stuff like that in that My Payments Plus, you can do that too on that system. So once we're in that system, we could use that as a district, as a prepayment system for other activities within the district, not just the nutrition services.
Okay.
And the plan, um, if the board chooses to move forward and put this on the regular meeting and, and votes for it, uh, the plan from the department is to phase it in in, uh, May and to the end of the year at our high schools, right? And then have the high schools, um, staff who are familiar with it coming into next year then help, uh, phase it into, or get it going up and running for the beginning of the year, district-wide. So we do have a phase-in plan already.
President Burton?
Um, how exactly does it work for a family to register off-site, uh, for free and reduced lunch? How is that recognized within our system as, as being vetted and, and qualifying for that?
Currently, or...
No, it's a new system.
With the new system. So in the new system, they have, there's a, um, a link that we will make available to parents.
Okay.
And they go into that link and they put their information in it. So it's really like almost, um, a vehicle to get it into the system. So rather than a hand, like, we go through and we hand pull it up now, and the system now, you know, will determine because we put the parameters in there for the income. Now what happens is the parent can do that at home, pull up their student, submit it. And then basically, within hours, it goes into our system. And instead, we just pull it up and we release the applications and it comes in. So it's an immediate, then we can print the letters and it's more immediate versus the stacks of, you know...
Hard copies.
Hard copies that we tend to go through now. So what we saw over Plymouth Canton is in the past, our goal was always between, uh, seven and ten days here to get the applications processed. I mean, we really have a good system, but to get the hand ones. Now, with this new system, you're going to see a letter go out to a parent, probably anywhere between three and five, which takes that pressure off them to come up with whatever payment they might need. Because until you're approved, you, you know, you have to provide funds for your student to receive it. So it's a win-win for us because it gets them on the program and especially if they're in need.
All right, thank you.
Have you found, um, any significant, um, upswing in, in the number of free and reduced lunches that you're in Canton that, that it's improving? Because, you know, you go, you go to the, you know, the, the emotional part of applying for that and having to send in a paper copy, and you don't know who sees it. And, you know, some of these kids, this is the only meals that they get.
Um, yes, we have. We have seen quite the drop in what we, that's why we've seen such a quick turnaround. We've seen such a drop in anything that we have to touch in terms of a paper.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, what I learned from that is that I kind of soft-launched that.
Yeah.
And I would launch that much stronger here for our parents, meaning that when the opportunity was given to me, I would make sure that our principals were well aware of this, that any communications they send out, that that link is there. Because it really, the more we can do with that, the better it is for parents. Um, I would even recommend that schedule pickups or open houses, that if there is a kiosk or something that we can have available, boom, they can go right there and do it and be done with it.
But, but you've seen it, uh...
Yes, I have. I have. I've seen it. I've seen a lot less folks, yes.
That's fantastic.
But we can still take the paper. It wouldn't...
Oh, yeah.
Like the payments, it wouldn't be exclusive, just to clarify.
It gives them the option.
It just, it's really, it, it really takes it, um, also in terms of your school offices. Um, they're so good about getting us stuff, but in the beginning of the year, it's so crazy. And, you know, sometimes I feel so bad because we'll call or be like, "It's been four days and we haven't gotten any applications from your school." And this way, hopefully, that'll alleviate some of that, yet one more thing they need to think about putting in the mail, which I think is a good thing.
We also talked about if the board chooses to move forward with this, that we will have, um, uh, Chromebooks available at registration as well. So when folks come to register, they can, if they choose to, they can automatically go on and, and register for this. So they could be filling out an application for registration or for this. It, you know, it wouldn't necessarily mean that, that that's what they're doing if they're on the Chromebook. But we'd like to make those available too, and then we'll just have that as part of our, our paperwork to say, "And while you're here, you know, if you'd like to fill this out." And that way, that can expedite that process as well.
Any other questions? Seeing this needs to go on to the regular agenda as well. And thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience while we juggled you around on the agenda, folks.
I told you I'm still on the application. Thank you.
President Burton, that's thankfully all we have.
There we go.
I'm sorry, Mrs.... We do, we'd love to have you there.
He scared her off.
I'll leave.
The next item on our agenda is item four, Finance Committee. Mrs. Monafield.
Yes, I have one item on my list. Mrs. Smith is going to come up and regale us with budgeting.
We're taking a twenty-second break.
You know what, we're... We've been going for a, a good few hours at this point. Uh, we are going to recess for about five minutes, so some of the folks who need to can, can take care of things they need to take care of. We will recess for five minutes and we will be back. Thank you, we are at recess. Welcome back to the continuation of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Committee, the whole meeting of April tenth. Thank you, all of you, for your patient break while we, uh, took care of things that were necessary. Uh, we have now the Finance Committee with Mrs. Monafield. Mrs. Monafield?
And Mrs. Smith is going to present us with the update on the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget projections.
Thank you, Ms. Monafield. Um, yes, uh, we are continuing to work on our two thousand seventeen eighteen budget. Um, we're watching a number of items, and so we wanted to share with you, uh, some of those items tonight. Uh, the first is the state funding. Um, we have a potential total increase, uh, looking at these four main factors. Um, with the governor's budget of about one point five million dollars, with the House budget about two million dollars, and with the Senate's budget of about, um, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's made up of four main, um, line items, um, which I've listed down for you. Uh, the foundation allowance being the first. Um, the governor's proposal is a fifty-dollar per pupil increase. The House is a hundred per pupil increase, and the Senate's is eighty-eight, um, per pupil. Uh, in the governor's budget, he includes a fifty-dollar per pupil, per pupil increase for high school students, um, which isn't included in the House or Senate budget. Um, and then in the Senate's budget, they have a MIPSers payment, uh, which is actually a net reduction to the district, so that would be roughly ninety-dollar decrease per student. Um, and then lastly, the at-risk funding. Uh, we're happy to report that with each of the proposals, there is a proposed increase for at-risk funding. Um, about six hundred thousand dollars for both the governor and House proposals, and seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for the, um, Senate proposal. So we'll continue to be monitoring that. Ms. Okus?
Yes, I just wanted to mention a couple of things about that in your packet. This week, you will receive a memo that, um, further details this information, um, for each of the budget proposals and talks about these four areas, as well as some additional, um, items which may impact the budget. Um, one specifically with regard to how shared time is funded and how we would receive reimbursement um, for pupils, um, with regard to shared time, which could potentially have an impact on our budget as well. Um, these are, these are the most significant at this point in time. Um, I did have an opportunity to have a lengthy, um, conference call, um, over, uh, break with Representative Cox and her, um, bus, and her House Budget Director. Um, we spoke at length about, um, the benefit of the dollars going on the foundation allowance. Um, and the, um, House is the only proposal where there is not the, the two X formula. So in both the governor's proposal and the Senate proposal, um, as you may recall, the governor's was either fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. On our end, we're on, we're on the low end of that because we're at the, we're at the low end of the high, right? So we are, um, we receive the, um, we're on the higher end of the foundation allowance, but on the low end of the band. Um, the Senate, again, as Mrs. Smith, um, indicated, um, is eighty-eight dollars on the low end of that. So the House is the only proposal where it's one hundred dollars per pupil, um, no matter the district. Um, so we really have to realize there's still a significant amount of work to be done at the legislative level before any of these are finalized. Um, there are some similarities in some of these, but there are some significant differences. The MIPSers offset is a significant hit. Overall, the Senate would be proposing, other than the at-risk dollars, an actual decrease to our per pupil fund. Um, and so that really would be untenable. Um, and so although we look at these dollars, we have to remember when we include the at-risk dollars in those totals that we initially read off, um, there are stipulations with how those dollars can be utilized. That doesn't just simply go into your general fund. Um, and so when you, when you look at the Senate dollars, we would actually be seeing a decrease. Um, and then, although we would certainly be able to utilize those funds, the about three-quarters of a million dollars in at-risk funds, um, that's not just general fund use that you can use for any purpose. Um, there, so there's quite a bit. Um, Mrs. Smith and I will continue to watch this very closely. We'll continue to communicate, um, on a regular basis with the folks who also monitor this closely and Lansing on our behalf. Um, but you'll receive a more detailed, um, description of each of those plans and how it would potentially impact us. Again, we're getting a little bit more information with regard to one of the proposals and how they're, um, proposing to fund shared... they're proposing to fund shared time. There's some lack, lack of clarity there. But that could also have a significant impact if it is not funded as it, as currently stated. And the only plan that does not change how shared time funding is provided is the House plan. Both of the other two plans do have a change in how those are funded. So, just sometimes when we hear those overall dollar amounts, those sound very positive, and, and, you know, we are hopeful. But again, as, as we've shared with you in the past, there are three different scenarios, and we'll, we'll end up somewhere within that milieu as we move forward. So, as we find out information, you will have it as well. But we're already beginning that process of communicating the importance of the addition, the, the dollars going first and foremost to the foundation allowance on a per-pupil basis. And then, secondly, though, that additional at-risk funding.
Can we take questions on, as we go through the numbers? Does anybody have any questions on this portion? We're all good? Okay.
Next item of impact will be the Wayne County Enhancement Village, both on, both on the revenue side, as well as the expenditure side. Sale of property, hoping to have some properties available and close during the 17-18 school year. Enrollment changes, estimating that we will have declining enrollment, but that will be offset by an increase in enrollment from outside the district for programs, including the Gifted and Talented Program, Japanese Immersion Program, and our Limited Schools of Choice Program. Also, health insurance costs. This week, we'll be getting information on our premium rate changes, which will have a significant potential impact.
Do we have any idea what direction they're going?
We'll receive more detailed information on Wednesday. So, we've received just some preliminary information. Mr. Winery will be in Lansing on Wednesday, and he will receive more detailed information that we'll be able to share with the board.
We have open contracts with our union groups. The employer retirement contribution rate change, they published what the rates will be for next year. And although it looks small, currently, the rate, not including the UAAL, which is that unfunded liability, it's 24.94 percent, and that's going up to 25.56 percent. And it doesn't sound like a lot, it's only .62 percent. But when $80 million of your general fund is salaries, that could be a $500,000 increase. So, something we'll definitely budget for, for next year. The closure of GAF, CAS, and Garfield will be savings for our general fund next year. And lastly, the Title II Part A, it's a grant, a federal grant, the title, Preparing, Training, and Recruiting High-Quality Teachers and Principals. And currently, in the President's 2018 budget, he is proposing eliminating, eliminating, eliminating that grant, and we're currently using that to fund some of our curriculum coordinator costs, as well as release time for teachers to go to professional development, and also conference costs. So, if that funding source isn't there, that's something if we plan to continue, we'll need to be coming out of the general fund. So, those are just nine major areas that we are watching, and that we are going to include in our budget for 17 and 18. So, anything you'd like to add? Anybody, any questions?
No, obviously, as you see, there's, there are some knowns in there, and then there are some unknowns. And so, as we work to begin to put these in a structure that we'll be familiar to you with regard to the budget, we wanted you to have what, what we see as some of the most impactful pieces. As you know, and as I've shared multiple times, we're working very hard on recommendations to the board with regard to the Wayne County Enhancement Village. As I've shared with you in the past, and as I've continued to share, this has been a significant focus for us. It is not something we take lightly. And so, we have spent multiple days focused on this work. And so, we have multiple areas of focus based on the four priority areas that we identified for the community throughout this process. And so, we are doing two things. We're watching closely as those funds come in to us to determine the appropriate dollars that we can allocate for next year. The second piece is making recommendations to you with regard to the four priority, priority areas that were identified, and how we believe that will best support our students, our staff, and our schools. So, that work has been very intriguing, and has been very detailed and very thoughtful, because these are dollars that we feel very grateful to have. We also know that there's a time-limited support to those dollars, and so, we need to make sure that the things we're putting in place are things that we can sustain as we move forward, and so that they're not simply a one-year implementation or bump, but that we're able to sustain that support. And so, we have to look at that not only for next year, but we look at these as multiple year decisions. So, as you know, that's been a focus of ours, and will continue to be. When we have that finalized and prepared, we will bring it to the board for a recommendation for your approval.
And does anybody else have any questions? Mrs. Smith, what is the expected percentage of receipts on the, on the village? I think it was, we were at eighty-five, and now they're suggesting eighty, that the percentage of what we're going to collect has actually gone down.
Yes, and that, I understand from Wayne Resa, a large part, not all districts collect taxes in the summer and winter. We have a number of districts, or a number of municipalities in Wayne County that just do summer levies. So, they received winter tax bills that folks just weren't used to seeing. So, the collections are lower than what they anticipated. So, originally, they had said eighty-five percent. They adjusted that to eighty percent. So, that's what we used for our budget amendment, too, that we presented in March.
Okay.
So, our recommendations will reflect the eighty percent. We'll also have priority recommendations, so that if those dollars increase, we're prepared for that. And so, we would have recommendations to you on, if that comes in better than expected, we'll be prepared with secondary priority recommendations for you to consider as far as that goes. So, we're hopeful that those, those dollars continue to come in, and that we're able to utilize as close to the full funding as possible. But we knew that this first year, there, there may be a bit of a delay in that.
Does anybody else have any budget questions? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Appreciate your time very much. And no action on this item. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight is Item Five, Curriculum Committee. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes, tonight, we have four items to discuss, and they're already coming to the table. They're in such a hurry. We're going to have some science equipment purchase, mathematics textbook adoption, Focus School update. That will be given by Mrs. Teresa O'Brien and Mr. Ben Hillard. And then, we'll be talking about a Cooperative Education Agreement for 2017-18, and that will be presented by Mrs. Tario. So, we can get started. Science equipment purchase? Teresa?
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Hillard and I are here this evening to bring a recommendation to purchase secondary science equipment. And this money has been allocated as a part of our bond. A little bit of background, the Science Equipment Committee began in the fall of 2013, and each high school and middle school sent a team of teachers and worked to list the essential science equipment that is needed for both middle school and high school science. They began with a needs assessment based on it, on what equipment they currently have, and what they need in order to better improve science instruction. The committee met with a college professor about what kind of lab equipment they use at the college level, met with vendors, and had demonstrations of current science lab equipment. They created lists by course, and then prioritized their list by each content area. They requested, the requested equipment would be used to support both current science labs, and also allow additional learning experiences that we currently don't have, aligned with the science curriculum. Materials will allow students to gather and analyze data, design experiments, and investigate phenomena. This will also allow our students to have more authentic science experiences, and support teacher instruction to better meet the shifts of the next-generation science standards. There are five vendors from which we would like to purchase the equipment. Fisher Scientific, Parko Scientific, Frey Scientific, Verneer Software and Technology, and Ward Science. The bid package was specific in nature, and the item numbers and, with item numbers and vendors. Due to that, the bid reflects the teacher's specific requests. So, Mr. Hillard's going to give you some examples of that.
Yeah, so some of the items were specific to that exact item number, that exact brand, and a lot of it is the sensors. A lot of the, the money in this bid is sensors and data collection. It's, that's where a lot of the technology comes from, that they can monitor, whether it's O2 levels, or salinity, or velocity in the different courses, they can see a real-time graph come up as they're monitoring something and gathering that. There's a couple big brands that make sensors. And for physics, for example, they have Pasco sensors. They've got some Pasco equipment in their class. So, really, they wanted to use things that could work with what they have. So, it wouldn't make sense for them to have anything but Pasco in there, because that's what the apps are going to be, that's what all their equipment's going to be. So, it was very specific, they needed that Pasco sensor. We've got some classes that have some Verneer equipment, and they went with the Verneer sensors to go with that. With Verneer, there's a couple different companies that sell Verneer stuff, so we still could see, you know, the real equipment from a couple different bids. With Pasco, it's really just from Pasco Scientific that you can get their equipment. So, we did list really specific items, because it really was that specific item is what was needed in, in the classroom.
Do you want to go into some detail about some of the different equipment that we're, that we're going to be receiving beyond the sensors?
So, like I said, the majority, or, or the big chunk of it, is, is sensors in every course, middle school, biochemistry, and physics. They all are having sensors where students can, when they come up with questions, they can actually have the resources to analyze and solve instead of just reading about it. But they can, they can do the science, which is something we're trying to move towards. Some of the equipment that's not in the sensors would be in the physical sciences and physics. You know, big springs where they can analyze waves is something, the cars that they can move up and down ramps, and then measure their velocity as they go over different, different ramps, different... So, most of it is, is the sensors, but there are some physical tools, especially in the physics and the physical science, where they have objects that they can move around, they can see how the forces interact with each other.
Mr. Centers?
So, there are two items that make a large portion of the overall purchase. If you look, one of which is the Advanced Chemistry Lab Quest II package with Spreakt Provis Plus. Is that, are those sensors?
Yes, it's a bundle of several sensors that would be in chemistry.
And then, the Lab Quest II Deluxe Biology Package, is that also a sensor?
Yes, that's sensors for biology.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
For those who are, then, science, what's a sensor?
So, there's several different types here, but it's something that can measure, and, you know, like I said, we've got O2 sensors, or oxygen, carbon dioxide sensors, for a biology class where they're measuring cellular respiration. So, they put it where that's going on, and they can see a graph come up, is the O2 level increasing or decreasing when we put it here next to a plant, or next to a human breathing. A velocity sensor in a physics class might be on the ballistics car, and as they move the car up and down ramps, they can see the velocity, the graph, graph on a Chromebook or an iPad in real time come up. So, as they interact with these tools, or in chemistry, it might be salinity as they're mixing chemicals, they can, they can actually measure that and see, how did this change the acidity levels or the salinity levels in that, and see that graph come out. So, it's a way to, all these sensors are really just gathering data that's out in the world, and how people would, how scientists would really go about gathering that data. So, if you come up with a big question and say, well, what happens? What really happens when we mix these? Now, our students will actually be able to measure that, and see that, and use that evidence to then do some of that claim evidence and reasoning work, which we're trying to encourage.
Okay. Tammy?
I'm assuming that this is all physical equipment, there's no agent, reagents, or chemicals, or, this is no textbooks, this is all physical, ongoing components to the science lab?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Centers?
So, I, the, let's say, take one of these sensors, are they something that, they're electronics, right? Are they something that are rechargeable? Are they hardwired into something you plug in? How do they, how do they operate?
Most of them are rechargeable with, like, a USB charger into a computer, or something like that, same way you charge your, your cellphone, maybe. So, most of them charge that way, and then they operate Bluetooth to come right to your Chromebook through an app, or to a phone, they work with phones. So, students, if they're in a class, they could pull it up on their phone, they could pull it up on a Chromebook. And like I said, they charge the same way that we charge a phone through a little mini USB cord.
So, you could use these multiple times?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not like a one-time use?
No, they should be ongoing, like, like a Chromebook, or like something like that, that, that kind of length. And, you know, this represents courses that all of our students take in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade. So, this is, a student going through our schools, we get five years of, of disequipment guaranteed, and then some that's used in, in other courses, the AP Bio, AP Physics, you know, what are electives, they get that as well.
Any other questions?
And there are a variety of items on this list, obviously, but what's the longevity range of, I mean, how long is this equipment going to last?
Well, we know it's going to last as long as we take good care of it, and I think the teachers understand that this is not a common occurrence to get this thing. So, so, you know, we, we think of it as, you know, the same way the Chromebooks, which, if you take care of them, they should last quite a while, and we hope this lasts quite a while. We've got some Pasco equipment, which buildings have bought on their own, or teachers that have bought on their own, that have lasted a long time. It's, it's not the same generation of equipment, but it's, you know, it's going on ten or fifteen years and still operating. And we would, you know, we would hope that we can take good enough care of this, that this will last quite a while.
All right, thank you.
And if we haven't said this, and I, I think you may have, that this is part of the 2013 bond, bond purchase.
Okay, then we would put this on the agenda for 417. Okay, that concludes the science. So, we can move on to the mathematics textbook adoption for algebra.
Thank you.
Mrs. O'Brien and Mr. Hillard?
We are.
Yay.
This evening, we'd also like to bring the recommendation to purchase Algebra I textbooks. The textbook that we are recommending is called Envision, and it is by Pearson Publishing. Again, I'd like to share a little bit about the adoption process that Mr. Hillard went through. As you know, our district has specific requirements for a textbook adoption, and it's outlined in the administrative regulations of our board procedures. The initial step of the process is to form a committee of teacher representatives. This committee consisted of two middle school teachers and six high school teachers representing each of our high schools. They began this past fall in 2016, and created a needs assessment of where we were with our current textbook and our curriculum. They spent extensive time reviewing our current Michigan State standards, and the Common Core shifts for mathematics, and developed a list with the ideal materials of what they would like to have. I'd just like to share a few of the things on their list. They wanted something that was well-aligned to the Common Core State Standards, engage students in meaningful problem-solving, include authentic applications of mathematical concepts and procedures, had an online textbook resource, provide opportunities to develop procedural competency and fluency. So, those were just a few of their things. They then developed a rubric in order to evaluate the textbooks, and the rubric had three main categories, focus on, focus and coherence, rigor and balance, and instructional support. Teachers identified a mathematical concept or lesson from each text, what is called a slice, and then used the rubric to evaluate each one. And Envision received the overall highest rating of the textbooks. Teachers also shared their textbooks, the, the texts with students, and had them discuss the pros and cons of the books. Finally, the committee came to consensus, and the best possible choice in the committee's vote was the Envision vote was the Envision Algebra One. This book best met the evaluation criteria and coherently developed the mathematical concepts deemed as priorities during the analysis. This series provides engaging tasks to deepen conceptual understanding, as well as opportunities to strengthen and apply procedural skills. So Mr. Hillard and I are happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Does this come with any kind of a digital component that a child can access from home?
Yes. So, there's a few different digital things that children can access from home, or students. There's a video tutorial, there's a procedural practice thing, and those two components are just free for anyone to access, but they're made by Pearson and aligned to the lessons in here. But even if we didn't use Pearson, we could still access those. And then there's also a digital online component and some extra books that we would have with the proposal on the quote, we'd have six years of that license.
For the students to use, or for the teachers to use?
For the students to use, six...
Can you go through detail with the quote?
Okay. So, the quote includes six years of that digital license, which includes also a six-year student companion, which is a note-taking student workbook. The rest of it is the teacher resources, and the student books, which, I don't know if people have seen it, it's a student book, I think much nicer on our students' backs if they take them here and there. So if you have the quote or have seen it, it's the student book, which they've given 150 free, charges for the other 1,000. The teacher resources are free, the assessment readiness, which are teacher resource packets where they can look at and get assessments that align to this, or practice for standardized And then the six-year license for the online and those student companions, and then there are also two professional development days that they've included in their quote.
Mrs. Burt?
The workbooks, is that something we're going to anticipate as an annual purchase? Is it consumable?
Well, we have six years, and that was mixed, we, on the committee, there were some teachers that thought, maybe, but without having used them, we didn't, we didn't know, there were several teachers that felt like they didn't need it, their students take those notes, some teachers that said they liked the look of it, and maybe after that six years would like to continue it, I think that would have to be, I think during that six years, we have a lot more data on, is that a necessary component, is it not?
Okay. So right now, we have, I imagine that this is the same situation as it is with many of our other textbooks that we can have recently purchased, which is, it would be the same cost to buy the physical book as it would be to buy the digital.
Yes.
They're going to charge you for one, give you the other for free, or vice versa, so you can't get away from having a physical book, as has been requested by some folks
Right.
who don't do a lot of this purchasing. So we're going to have, at least for six years, we're going to have the physical book, and we're going to have the digital copy. So we're going to have the digital workbook, in essence, put into this package
Yes.
for six years, and we could decide if we want to purchase the physical workbook, you're saying?
Yeah.
But if we did, that would be a consumable annual purchase, is that right?
Right, after that, if we decided we wanted to continue that, and, so the same with the digital, we'd have to decide if that's something that we want to do.
We'd have to purchase the digital, after six years.
Yearly after six years.
After six years, but we could keep, obviously, we'll keep the physical book.
Right.
So is it our intention right now to purchase any of the physical workbooks, or not?
That's, I mean, that's not something we've ever purchased in the past, them throwing it in for six years is, I think, nice for us to see and use it, it's not something that we've ever had in the secondary
Okay.
level.
All right. That's it, those were the questions, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we can put this on the 417 agenda for a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Mr. Hillard, so we're going to move on to the C Focus School Update at Garfield, and our presenter's going to be Mrs. O'Brien.
It is. So tonight, I am here to present to you the second of three required presentations about our efforts to reduce student achievement gaps. Focus Schools are schools that have been identified that they have a large gap between their top 30% of students and their bottom 30% of student performance, based on state assessments. Focus Schools could have a high average performance overall, but still have that large gap from top to bottom, suggesting that they're struggling to address the low-performing students. So this is the reason why the state of Michigan has required Focus School quarterly reports. We're doing it trimesters, because that's how we are doing our grading, and share with local boards of education in the efforts of how they're doing as the year goes on to close that gap. So currently, we do only have one Focus School at Garfield, and as in previous reports that have been presented to you, the presentation will take place in three parts, the diagnostic data dialogue, the teaching and learning priorities, and then the systems that are in place to monitor those priorities. So I'm going to begin with what we're doing at the district level, and then move to the school level. So beginning with diagnostic data dialogues, throughout this school year, the members of the Academic Service Department and our Division of Instruction spend time reviewing our M-Step results, our MME and our SAT results, our I-Ready diagnostic, our mid-year results, and then comparing it to our fall results, and then looking at our school accountability scorecards. We look for trends in how our students are doing, and then what gaps there are, and then try and determine what factors might be influencing those performances. At Garfield, during the last three months, they have held their second round of data digs, at which each grade level was given the opportunity to analyze and discuss their benchmark scores and the individual needs of the students in each class. Interventions were reviewed, what is working, what's not, and then plans for the next trimester, what they're looking for for student growth, and how they're going to close the gaps. So the last day-to-day took place in February, and used the I-Ready mid-year results comparing to fall results. They also have weekly Title I meetings, where they review referrals, their Title I students' progress, and again, are monitoring what interventions they're using, and if they're successful. They also hold weekly achievement team meetings, that gives a classroom teacher the opportunity to discuss individual student needs with, you know, the school psychologist and social worker, and gather more evidence to support the classroom teacher on what they can do to support their student. So the teaching and learning priorities, the second section of the report, Garfield has identified and implemented as a result of their data analysis, that they have the bottom 30% of their school all participating in literacy and/or math interventions. They have students that are participating in I-Ready monthly checks, diagnostic checks, monitoring, and checking on how they're doing in both reading and math. Some students, based on those results, participate in the I-Ready online instruction, and others get individualized support from classroom teachers. In addition, some students were identified to participate in after-school reading opportunities with Madonna University College of Education students. They also offer a variety of Tier Two academic interventions that are provided throughout the day using LLI. And lastly, they have used their collaborative learning time to collaborate with each other about the priority standards, and what they want their students to know and be able to do at each grade level. For the third required topic, I would like to share the ways that we are verifying that the staff is doing what they described that they are working on in the teaching and learning. So the building principal, Mrs. Kohler, conducts unannounced classroom walkthroughs and observations. We collect the achievement and Title I meeting minutes and share them. The collaborative learning meeting minutes are also collected and reviewed, and then they have their ongoing discussion of assessment results. So as you can see, the staff at Garfield has engaged in diagnostic data dialogues, and have selected teaching and learning priorities, and then are monitoring those. So as a result, they continue or expand their existing programs and adjust them for what the students need, providing students with double-dip opportunities in order to close the gap between their identified students and the rest of the group. So as I mentioned at the start of the presentation, I will continue to report the progress of Garfield in another three months, and share with you how they have ended the year, looking at their end-of-year I-Ready results, and their reading levels, and their monitoring of how their intervention program has been working. A copy of their Focus School report will be uploaded to the state's website after tonight's presentation, and a copy of the report will be in your packet this week. Any questions?
Any questions? Mrs. Burt?
From, they're midstream right now, recognizing that, but are they seeing the improvement that they're hoping to see at this stage of the game?
Mrs. Kohler shared that they felt like, one of the areas, one of their interventions this year that they've seen a lot of improvement for is before-school interventions, kids being dropped off early so that they're not missing classroom instruction, so they've been really targeting, monitoring those students. And then also the students who are getting the LLI interventions. So during the school day, they get an additional reading, and so those children, they're monitoring their improvement in their reading growth. Some students have the I-Ready instructional piece, this is the first year we've used that, and so we have seen some improvement in some students, we're learning how to analyze that data and make sure we know what it's telling us, so I wouldn't want to say what we're seeing there.
Okay. But some pieces, they're definitely seeing it working at this point?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Burt. Theresa, you mentioned something about they were IDing students, and then something about Madonna.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't sure I understood exactly what that was.
Mrs. Kohler shared that select students were identified to participate in an after-school reading opportunity with Madonna University College of Education students, so she has created a partnership with them, and some of their students come over and work with Garfield students.
Do we have any idea how those students are IDed?
I do not.
Okay.
But I find out.
Yeah, I'd like to know how the students are picked to get into that program. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, then that doesn't have to be put on anything, that's just an update. So thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our last presenter is Mrs. Tariel, and she's going to talk about cooperative education agreements. Dr. Tariel, thank you. For 2017-18.
That is correct. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm also presenting on behalf of Steve Archibald for the Career Center as well.
Okay, great.
So I am here this evening to discuss renewing the cooperative education agreements that Livonia Public Schools has. I'll start with the Livonia Transition Program. So we currently have four cooperative agreements, Northville Public Schools, Redford Union, South Redford, and Crestwood. And as you know, the Livonia Transition Program is a program currently housed at Schoolcraft College, which services our students with disabilities aged 18 to 26. We have a variety of classrooms and office space at Schoolcraft, and within Schoolcraft, we have eight students that currently work on the campus, and then we have a variety of our other 42 students who work in the surrounding area, eight of them work within a mile radius of Schoolcraft Community College. So having access to all of those new businesses, especially right across the street, has been wonderful for our students in learning those opportunities, gaining the vocational training, and hopefully becoming competitively employed. So we have those cooperative agreements, we currently have 52 students, we charge the resident district a flat fee, and then the resident district receives the state aid for their students. Do you have any questions about the Livonia Transition Program?
Mrs. Burt?
Is our number capped at that 52, or have we seen an increase in the students that are going?
We've seen, right about 52 has been, on average, for the past three years.
Okay.
So, the nice thing about our program is that we have an approximate 5% to 10% competitive employment rate, so we do lose students throughout the year, which is ideal. I mean, you never like to say that you want to lose students, but in this case, the fact that our students are becoming competitively employed is exactly the goal of the entire program.
Okay, all right. And our agreement is with Northville, correct?
Our agreement is with Northville, Crestwood, South Redford, Redford Union.
Okay.
Yep, and so Northville sends us currently two students, Redford Union sends us four, South Redford two, Crestwood one, and that varies depending on their student need as well.
Okay, so the majority are still coming from Livonia?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I think there was one other question.
Oh, yes.
In the example of the contract in our packet was Northville.
Correct.
And do we have a limit on the kids from Northville? I noticed that when I was reading through, it said, it had an X in the agreed number of students. Is that just filled in based on the number of students that they're giving us, or what's the X?
Correct, because I do not know how many students they will be sending us, I need approval from you that the cooperative agreements can go through, then I go to Northville and ask them. I know I will have these two from this year, currently staying in our program for the 17-18 school year, and as they graduate students from their high school, then they potentially bring us more
Okay.
students.
Okay.
But we're not capped.
We're not capped, yes. Yeah, we're not capped. Correct.
Okay, no. And from what I've been hearing, and I know a couple of students who either are currently in the program or have been in the program, for the students who are participating, they absolutely love it. They're able to be on a college campus, but they're able to still get their special education services, and it's just such a win-win, and it's fabulous, I believe, of Schoolcraft to be able to work with us and provide that space for those students.
Absolutely. Glenn Cerny has been phenomenal in providing us that space that we've had for a couple of years now, so he's been instrumental in providing that space for us. And if I can just give a shout-out to LTP, they're also having their craft show at VistaTech tomorrow, so at 11:00 to 1:00, so if you want to come to VistaTech and look at their crafts, they're pretty amazing, they're a talented, young, adult group.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, well, I guess we can move on for the Livonia Career Tech Center
Okay.
agreement.
And for the Livonia Career Tech Center?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, correct.
Yes, for...
Okay, for both of these?
Yes, I'm sorry. Consent agenda for next week.
Correct.
Thank you.
Livonia has cooperative education agreements with Northville, Plymouth Canton, Wayne Westland, Redford Union, Crestwood, Canton Preparatory School, and Oakland Flex Tech Academy. So as you know, these cooperative agreements allow students to attend the Livonia Career Technical Center as space permits, and Livonia Public School students always have first seat for any of the classes at the Career Center. The resident district receives the state aid for the student, and is invoiced each semester for the amount equivalent to the fractional FTE the student is scheduled at the Career Center. Special education services are the responsibility of the resident district, and we also currently have cooperative agreements in place with Wayne Westland Community Schools, which allows Livonia Public School students to attend the William D. Ford Career Technical Center, and transportation is not provided. And again, Mr. Archibald would like this also to go on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Dr. Tariel, do we have any students going to Wayne Westland?
We do not.
And Livonia students?
At the William D. Ford?
Right.
We currently do not.
Okay. And you said we, the other districts are invoiced, right?
Correct.
Have we ever had an issue with being reimbursed or paid?
I would have to defer to Allison, no, Allison is shaking her head, no.
Shaking her head, no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we can put this on the consent agenda for 417.
There we go.
Okay. That finishes off our curriculum committee information. Thank you, Dr. Tariel.
And that brings us to item six, Policy Committee. Mrs. Frank.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith is going to come up and present to us the board policy DJE for purchasing the update to consolidate.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Good to be back. So in looking at our board policy, it took a look at three existing policies we have out there that are all pertaining to purchasing, and it clearly presented itself that this could be consolidated and we could make it more concise and streamlined. So what I'm proposing is a one purchasing board policy. So with that, I'll share with you the new proposed policy. The board authorizes the superintendent to purchase and/or supervise the purchase of all materials, equipment, supplies, and services necessary for the operation of the school district. It is the intent of the board that the school district purchase competitively without prejudice or favoritism and seek maximum value for all expenditures. Competitive pricing is to be pursued by following legally required processes, as well as through such methods as cooperative purchasing, formal or informal bidding, requests for quotations from multiple vendors, and negotiation. The board reserves the right to accept or reject any or all bids. So not only am I recommending the consolidation of the three policies into this one new policy, we've also taken this opportunity to update our administrative procedures. I've met with a couple of district staff to find out what we're currently doing, and we want these procedures to reflect that. Some things have changed since they were last updated. The policy looks like was last updated formally in 1988, and so a little has changed. So, and I believe the administrative policies were changed after that, but it's also, I think those have been at least 10 years since we've formally made any changes to that. With that, I could answer any questions if you have any.
And just a quick note from what you saw last week, not last week, two weeks ago at the study session, a recommendation was made to add the final line that is on this policy, the board reserves the right to accept or reject any bids. So that was made by one of our board members, and Mrs. Smith did add that. So just to clarify, that is the only difference from, it's the same as what's in your packet. It's the only difference from what was covered with you at the study session.
Also, just to add to, this is, I've done some research looking at other districts in the area, and this is very consistent, too, across the board, so.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I just have one suggestion. I noticed one line of language that we have omitted from, in this version, from previous versions, and that is from responsible vendors. I see it does appear in the administrative procedures. It is, it can be implied when we say we're looking for maximum value and so forth, but I would feel more comfortable if we did add from responsible vendors back into this policy. It seems like a logical place to me in the third line after the word competitively.
Mm-hmm.
So then that sentence would read, it is the intent of the board that the school district purchase competitively from responsible vendors without prejudice or favoritism and seek maximum value for all expenditures.
That is a great suggestion.
Is that acceptable to the rest of the board?
That's great, because we don't always take the lowest bid.
Right. Right.
Because the lowest bid is not always responsible for it. So I think that's key verbiage.
Yeah. I'm more comfortable with it in there, and I'm appreciative of the fact that it's in the administrative procedure, which in essence covers us, but I would still like it to be in board policy.
Great idea.
Tell me about verbiage again.
Just add the words from responsible vendors, and where I'm suggesting that we add it is after the word competitively in line three.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And where is it on this administrative procedure?
I believe under point four, in the in-ordering materials and supplies for the bidding principles, we'll follow these regulations and then.
Oh, awards will be made to the lowest responsible qualified vendor.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonnefield.
This is just a really small thing, so no, it's perfectly fine. But usually, we say authorize a superintendent or his or her designee rather than and/or supervise. I don't know if that's a consistency, just from going through the policies.
You mean at the beginning, the board authorizes a superintendent and/or designee?
Yeah, or his or her designee rather than and/or supervise the purchase.
I don't think our superintendent does a lot of the purchasing herself anyway.
No, but she's still responsible.
That's where the and/or supervise the purchase.
She's still responsible for it. But usually, we say and/or his or her designee, or it's just, it doesn't really matter, but it's just, it's just different wording than we use, and I'm just, for consistency purposes, I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but it just struck me when we were reading that.
Yeah, because the superintendent is ultimately responsible for.
Yes.
But in this case, doesn't really.
No, we're not striking superintendent.
Right, right. I understand. No, what I'm saying is what you're saying makes sense, because the superintendent, while she is ultimately responsible for the purchases.
It's not necessarily.
Yes, supervise is really not the most accurate word.
It can be misconstrued as direct supervision.
I'm comfortable with changing it to his or her designee, as we have in other policies.
And I wouldn't even, I mean, it would be consistent with other policies that are very, you know, that usually.
Sure.
So whatever that regular line is, instead of the supervise the purchase.
I think it's another good suggestion.
Yeah. It just hit me when I was.
So we would strike then from the word and/or supervise the purchase of, those words would be removed, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So starting with and and starting ending with, that would be struck through.
Yeah, and/or his or her designee to purchase, oh, all right. I'm going to start reading. Yeah. Yeah, and get rid of the and/or supervise part, and just make it consistent with our other policies.
Is everybody else good with that?
Yeah, we'll see it when it comes back.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, that finishes that policy.
Okay. So this would then go on, next meeting for first reading.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. The next item on our agenda is item seven, Personnel Committee. I do not have any items. Mr. Sanders?
No.
Nope, Mrs. Opus?
No, thank you.
All right. And the last item, item eight, is Legislative Committee. Mrs. Jarvis, do you have anything to come to?
Other than staying on top of the budget stuff, which is, but we're all trying to wait for.
24/7, yes. Do you have anything else legislative? All right. Thank you to all of those who have hung in with us through their lengthy meeting. We have one in our audience, and maybe we have two or three at home who are still hanging in there. We are now adjourned. Thank you.